Boarding to order, the clerk called the roll.
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. If you'll all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We need agenda review. I would like to reorder the agenda and move item number seven. The item dealing with the energy authority, to move that up and to add a dimension to that, which Councilman Wyrick will address when we get to that point. Are there any other changes in the agenda?
There was a thought, maybe, where is it? Where are we? The item that addresses council priorities, maybe move that to the end.
Right.
Where is that?
Yeah, that's number three. Yeah, putting number-
It's kind of mixed in there.
Right. Why don't we take subsection three of three and move that to the end of the agenda?
Yeah.
In case we don't quite get there, we won't keep everybody else all night.
Mayor, I'd even ask that we just pull that part of it and actually agendas it as its own entity and bring it back to council session in February, or we do a special session on Saturday and council just go through it and prioritize it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, under the consent agenda, there are some items that I'd like to pull, but I don't want to take everybody's time up tonight. I'm just going to mention the format that we use for approving the warrants and the treasurer's report, both I would like to have as a discussion item, or I'll just pull it off consent at our next meeting and make my remarks. The one, yeah, I'd like to pull number D, or number D, pardon me, letter D, under item number one, for one correction in the minutes. And a question for the city attorney. On spelling corrections, the clerk can make those on their own without us having to-
Yes, the clerk can correct spelling errors and obvious scrivener's errors without any need for council action.
The auto checker sometimes doesn't know the difference. I don't know if our chamber managers are here, but he ended up being listed as Scoot rather than Scott. So, those kinds of things, we won't pull them for that reason.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we will reorder the agenda, moving seven up to the first order after we finish the consent agenda, and we will pull the council meetings of December 15th. It's paragraph D under number one, okay? If there are no-
I'd like to pull consent item C.
Which one?
C, the treasurer's monthly report on investments for the city of Ojai.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion on the rest of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? No objection, the consent agenda is approved. Okay, Randy, item C, is that-
Yeah, I would just, you know, this, item C is something that we had talked about in the past, and it was just-
Point of order, we still have presentations and public communications.
Oh, pardon me.
Okay.
You are correct. I'm moving a little fast. We have presentations and public comment, and under presentations, I have two items, one that is listed, which is the Martin Luther King Resolution, and we have Representative Liz Spiller, did you want to address the council to- Now would be a good time.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Spiller, I'm a senior at Villanova Preparatory School. And so, as you all know, this Monday, January 15th, is Martin Luther King Day, and it actually marks the 18th annual Ojai celebration of MLK Day, under the sponsorship of the Ojai Valley Youth Foundation. And it's the only event I know of in Ojai that's like run by high school volunteers. We have a lot of students from Nordoff, Oak Grove, and Villanova, and we work under Kate Russell, Lani Koffer, Ron Dia Koffer, Suzie Thatcher, Francie Nelson, and Suzanne Feldman. And we're just all teenage volunteers. And this year, what we have is just a great lineup, starting at 10 on Monday, with the Nordoff Bite Size Jazz combo, followed by a proclamation from Mayor Johnston, and we go on to have children's groups from Monica Ross, from Oak Grove. We also have really great music from Gil Sotu, Alan Thornhill, Bernie Larson, Perla Bataya, Lani Koffer, The Chills with Vaughn Montgomery and the pianist Aaron Embry, and Jade Hendricks. And we have our special keynote speaker, who is Dos Williams from Santa Barbara.
Very good, a relative.
My nephew!
Yeah, oh really, this is cool. And also, something that we all thought was really important in the aftermath of the Thomas Fire, was providing the opportunity for people to connect under this, and so, we wanted to provide that opportunity. And so, Terry Wolf, with the help of Ojai, will be there to accept monetary donations, provide information, and assist anyone else who needs help. And I'm hoping to find other organizations who are helping people who are affected, and provide the opportunity for those organizations to have that location. And so, this is my third and final time organizing the event, and I just think it's really important to have this event for like the community to get together, especially after everything. And so, please, everyone, and you guys too, come out Monday and bring your friends and family.
Okay, so that's what, Monday, the 15th, at 10 o'clock in Libby Park?
This time of Monday, at 10 o'clock, ignore the banner, that does say 11, but it is 10.
Yeah, okay, 10.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, Liz, thank you very much, and for the work you did on this.
Mayor Johnston, would there be any objection to having this event posted on the city calendar?
No, not that-
Officially?
I think that's excellent. City manager, take care of that? Okay, and the next presentation, it's not listed on the agenda, but I invited Steve Wickstrom, the manager over at Lake Casitas, to come and give us a little information about where everything is, between fire, flood, and the drought. The plague, I don't know what else.
That's where we think it is, right now.
And black water runoff.
Well, yeah, I've got terms for that, too. Well, thank you for having me tonight, and I'm glad to be here.
Thank you for coming.
It's been a long December, and a long last night, and going through the storms, and, you know, thank goodness that, you know, I just want to throw out a word to the people in Montecito that have gone through a tremendous flood event, and, you know, I just want to thank goodness that we haven't seen that, but just realize that we're still at January 9th. We're just at the beginning of our rainy season, so I think, you know, for all of our citizens to be prepared, be aware, and learn from the lessons that people are going through at Montecito right now, to be aware of their surroundings and follow the instructions of evacuations. It's a very sad situation up there, and very chaotic, and it just adds on top of the confusion that we really had, and all the work, and everything that went on with the fire during December, so, you know, everybody be safe out there. So, I just want to throw that one out there. First, I think I'm going to just talk quickly about stormwater conditions out in the Ventura River area. We had a really steep peak hit us in the Matilla Canyon area last night about 3:00, and it had one person at Robles Diversion Dam against my orders, but that's okay, he's a long timer, too. We saw about a 10-foot rise of water at Robles Diversion Dam within minutes. It's the kind of flows that we can see in the system now that there's absolutely no vegetation in the area. Referred to black water, I call it liquid asphalt, something that I saw during the 85 fires, which was really surprising to see this type of water that we're seeing in the river, and then let alone seeing in much broader watershed than we have ever seen before. It's going to be a challenge. It was a challenge at Robles today. The fish screens do not accept black water liquid asphalt through it, so it's another challenge that we face at Robles to move water to Lake Casitas and get that lake in good condition, but we'll hopefully see what's going to occur. We're testing about every four hours whether we can run that canal, so it's not going to be left to its own volition. We're going to keep trying, keep trying, and move some water. We do have water moving into the lake. Given that, I would say 99.9% of our watershed directly into Lake Casitas has been totally burned, we're going to see quite a bit of water yield into Lake Casitas directly without Robles Diversion Dam. In fact, Robles in general only contributes about 30% of our water supply. Quite a bit of water, even though we just had two, two and a half inches of rain in our watershed, water moved into our lake pretty well through those other inflows. So, we're keeping on that, and we're trying to figure out a lot of different things with the ash as it comes into the lake, and monitoring it, and making sure that our filters are working well, and are going to perform, but this is new territory for a lot of this, so we're going to be working hard on all these angles. Next one I want to talk about very quickly is the water system transition acquisition. I think this is the first time I've met before you since we've taken over the Golden State Water System, and I know I've talked to many of you about the water system, and it's going to be a challenge, but you know what? We're ready for the challenge, and we're going to keep on it and keep working on it. It's going to be a journey also. Part of the journey, I know we went through this last month with water billings, billings that were due after four and a half, five months of not paying any water bills, people had to pay bills, and actually, the bills were due before the fire started, but the fire being in there, too, it kind of really hit a head during the holiday season of having to pay bills for a lot of people. And out of the 460 tags that we hung, only 100 remained as turnoffs that we had to deal with in the following week, and I think we've got it down to about 22 right now, which are probably meters out in empty fields and a few empty houses that we're dealing with right now. But, you know, that was not a fun situation, but then again, it's part of the transition. Now, we're going to be on monthly water bills, people are going to see their monthly water bills. I think everybody I've talked to here in the valley has been relatively pleased at seeing the dollar values that they're seeing on their bills, rather than what they used to see at the Golden State rate. So, you know, hopefully that will be the trend and the transition that we're making moving forward, is bringing everybody into Ojai, into the Casita system, and being part of our Casita system. We're also doing assessments of the system. This is part of that journey, but it's the initial part of the journey, and determining what all needs to be fixed out there. I'm just going to tell you, it's a lot. I can't be any more frank than that. There is a lot of things to be done in the system, and it's going to be a journey. Some things that we're finding are so non-standard to plumbing, I'm almost embarrassed to say that somebody with any type of degree, or a plumber even puts some of this stuff together, but, you know, we're finding it, we're dealing with it, so we're going to continue that until this is fixed and it's running right. It did perform well during the fire. I'm not going to say anymore about that because of some pending litigation, but I think our staff were really focused on the Ojai system, making sure that it protected the city of Ojai. I know we probably went 36 hours without any sleep trying to make sure that everything was running in an appropriate way for the city of Ojai. Last thing I want to bring up, and I was happy to hear, November 28th meeting, I think Director, or Councilmember Haney, you brought back to staff the water-wise document. I've talked to Steve McClery briefly about that, I'm very happy that you did. I think it's something that, one of those avenues that the city and Casitas need to work partnership, side by side, to really develop something that works. We're already doing a lot of those things that are in that document, and the lack of reference to Casitas doing those things for 20 years now was kind of a surprise, but that's okay. We need to work together and get it right for our constituents, our common customers, citizens, so that we can do the right things water-wise and keep our water supplies as healthy as we can going forward, and I think our coordination needs to be done. It's something that I recognize with the city of Ventura, and I know, Johnny, you've gone through this at the city of Ventura, where if you don't have a planning department talking to a water department, you're suddenly having the planning department running out, and there's water shortages that result. I think we're in a good situation here with not necessarily having that, but I think our coordination is really important, and I think we can get there. So, my hand's out there to Steve, and he knows that, so we'll work together on trying to develop up something, and also understanding what we already do that will work for the city, that we do for every other customer in the city, in the entire Casitas district. So, I think we're, you know, talking, and it's going to be good, so, for that, so.
Steve, on the, because of the recent fire, everybody's concerned about, you know, fire flows and pressure in the lines. Casitas, you have a retail end of your business over in the, what, the Oakview area, where you serve residential customers, and you have fire hydrants?
Yes.
And do you have an assessment of the condition of the fire mains and hydrants in Ojai yet?
Not quite yet, and that was one thing, I was on my list here, I skipped over, getting to water-wise, is that next week, our assessment group is going to be in Ojai, they're going to be, they've been modeling this system, they're going to be doing some flow tests, so you will see them out there flowing some hydrants out here. I also want to get around, I was requested by Stan Green to check every fire hydrant. It takes some time to do that, but that may be very worthwhile for us to do that. But we're going to be doing some flow tests next week out here, so if you see a couple people at a hydrant flow testing and hooking up to it, that's us. The real trick is trying to find out, the way this system was put together, what valves were abandoned in the ground, turned off, blocked off, not on the surface, trying to find those areas that are difficult plumbing scenarios that cause deficiencies in fire flow. So, we're going to try to see if there are any of those.
But you have a current standard state model that you use within the water retail
We do.
and fire, and that will then now be available in upgrading the system?
We utilize the Ventura County Water Works standard for fire prevention. The real question is when we start looking at pipelines that were put in in 1929, which is a good part of your internal grid, what design criteria was that put together for? Because when I fill out a Form 126, or when I used to fill out the Form 126 as the engineer of the district, I would have to state what that system was designed for in fire flow. Some of these systems are going to be, we're going to have to sit down and really calculate through it, rather than saying, we know that, for instance, the Ranch Matilla system was put in for 1,000 GPM, Oakview was put in for 500 GPM. We're going to have to take a look at these smaller systems and reasonably put what we expect a fire flow to be in those systems, because I don't know what they were designed for, and-
Well, the city's very interested in working with the water district, and I know after the floods, or the stormy weather gets down where you have some time, that we need to kind of work together on an inventory of what we have and what we can look forward to improving, so.
I think the other thing that's very important, I mentioned this actually two years ago, when I went to lunch with Greg Grant, and I think Steve over at the, over at the Lake Casitas, and just contemplating the ever potential of Golden State being acquired. And that's working together between the streets program and pipeline replacement program. There's nothing worse than going out there and laying nice new asphalt out there, and then having to come back and replace a 1929 cast iron pipe. So, let's try to coordinate those together. It worked very well at Mallory and Eucalyptus, and I think we ended up with a real good scenario at funding, helping to fund some of the asphalt repair work. Those are the kind of things that we need to do together.
Okay.
Mayor Johnston?
Yeah, Bill?
And, yeah, thank you for that, and all those people on those streets are so grateful, so thank you.
It worked out well.
Yeah. Two things, any thought to getting a DES truck, the way Ventura Water has, to reduce water waste from hydrant testing? Is it cost effective? I don't know the answer, I've not done the analysis.
I think that's the real question that I would have regarding that, is whether it's really cost effective. I'll get a hold of Joe McDermott and just see how they're doing with that. I know it's an expensive vehicle to start with, but, you know, not flushing water to the point where it's going out in the environment.
Right.
When we get into some of these tighter system, it works. When we get into some of my longer systems, where I've got miles to run, I can't do it.
I'm just curious, I noticed they congratulated themselves for getting that, and I just wondered how it was working out, and whether you want to consider that, you know?
Yeah.
And then the second thing, did your sediment mitigation, you deployed some sediment mitigation on the Coyote Creek in Santa Ana, I believe?
Not yet.
Oh, I thought you had deployed it already, I was wondering-
No. It was like 1985, I did that flock unit, and the chemicals showed up two weeks after the first storm, so I got a feeling that our turbidity booms are going to show up in two weeks from today.
Just wondering, thank you.
Randy?
Again, Steve, I'm happy to see you here, and sometimes I can be Casitas' worst critic.
I know you're an east-west end of Seamy Valley guy.
But the most important, well, we go back a long ways, you and I. But, more importantly is you are our water purveyor, and we place a high value on that. There was a reason that you guys stepped up and took over for Golden State, and this community, like you said, and the rates that we just received, are going to see the benefits of that. My concern today is how, if we don't receive that, let's say, 12,000 acre feet of water like we did last year, that sustains us one more year, and we come into April and we're heading into that stage four. I would like to have you, and maybe, maybe Casitas, maybe OB-GMA and council, but maybe do some type of a joint session with the public, and actually talk about what will have, you know, what are the tipping points, and I know it's acre feet, but also, the biggest question I get most of the time is, well, we're sitting on more water underneath us than there is in, technically, in the lake, at their lake levels. Why aren't we using more of this and less of that? And I think the community just needs a better understanding, it can only come from you, the technical advisors and the engineers that are operating these systems. But that's the biggest concern I have, and then more importantly is, heads into, we don't want this discussion on April 1st, if April 4th is the cutoff, we need to be having it February 1st, and we need to start preparing this community for worst-case scenarios, and pray and hope that that doesn't happen.
I'm glad you said hope, but I would add one more thing that I heard before in regard to going to a stage four scenario. I would say most of the communities in the entire district are probably already using in the stage four type of use. To having gone, I was blown away the last two years at seeing the way that the public reacted with the drought and with the lake, and I'm glad, I think you understand this, that that lake is probably the best barometer for attitudes for people to see, how that water can go down. But it's truly amazing that we're seeing residential and overall reduction in water demand at 40%. Truly amazing, and, you know, this community is doing well, but it's got to continue, and it's got to work hard at it, and those that aren't there, that's going to be one of the other things that's going to be coming up in the next couple of months, we're going to be assigning allocations to each individual customer, and giving them a schedule to utilize water on, and so, you know, trying to get everybody to make sure that they're part of the rest of the district that is doing exactly that same thing, but, you know, to see 40% reduction has just been remarkable for us. The other aspect of that is understanding, I think, for this community, that in general, this community uses about 2,000 acre feet a year. And part of it is what you, I think what you said is, sitting on this water, and it gets back to the assessment part, what we're really trying to do is assess what went on and what is going on, and what can we do with the wells that we've acquired out there? Because when I go out there and I understand there's a well that's supposed to be pumping well over 300 GPM, which is not a big well in my books, and it's only pumping 66, we've got some situations that we need to work on, and we'll try to get that going in the right direction, to get this community more reliant on their groundwater basin, and that conjunctive use part of it starts to really play in.
Right. Well, and again, to me, just the fact that you come in here tonight and speaking publicly should give this community a good feeling, that we don't have to go to you, you're willing to come to us, and again, I appreciate that a lot.
Well, I just throw one more thing, and we've got a lot of people who live in this community, I've been in this community for 34 years, I don't think my wife is playing it, she's probably watching right now, but, you know, we grew up in this community-
You don't have an announcement for her, do you?
Nothing right now. No. She said she doesn't want to go anywhere, so I'm just taking it as that. Don't push it, don't push it at all. But, you know, we're invested in this community, this is, Casitas is part of this community, and we're really glad to have made that transition, because I think it really solidifies that idea that we have a water purveyor, and we have a lot of good mutuals and a lot of good other special districts here that serve the communities that surround Ojai, so, you know, it takes everybody to work together, and I think that fire did a lot to help galvanize some of that, too.
Well, thank you very much for coming this evening, and-
You're welcome, thank you. Any questions, please give me a call, too, I'm right down the road.
Okay, right, thank you. Okay, now, it's about public comment, I've got some cards, I've got quite a few, so I would ask, let's try to do it in two minutes apiece unless we have a really critical topic that we want to go beyond the two minutes. Okay, we've got, Steve has been taking care of Chelseaa. I thought I saw Chelseaa here. Sutula there.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Chelsea Sutula, President Sespe Creek Collective, just wanted to check in about a couple things. I received my temporary state license on January 2nd. So far, the fallout has largely been a lot of disappointed people coming in expecting to just walk in and get legal cannabis, and we have to turn them away, so-
You don't want legal recreational?
We're medical only, so we have to turn them away.
Right, but is that who's disappointed, the recreational crowd?
Yes, exactly, yeah. So, I still invite a couple, the people that haven't seen my dispensary to come take a tour, I really encourage you to come. I think, since the fire, it's worth revisiting this discussion about introducing additional benign license types, to take advantage of the artistic capital in your community, cottage kitchen capital in your community. There's a bunch of people that have approached me, asking, can I sell you my tinctures and lotions and capsules and balms? And I said, no, you're not permitted, I can't work with you. And they're out of the game, they live in Ojai, and they're out of the game. And I've encouraged them to come and speak, and hopefully they will. As I have entered the new world order, I really appreciate having local supply chain contacts. I'm looking at a spreadsheet to order from people up in Humboldt, Mendocino County. It's really taken the joy and the connection out of the supply chain element here, and it's kind of like, I'm trusting a bunch of other people I don't know anymore to make decisions about the medicine that's going to benefit people in Ojai. And so, I think it's worth maybe reconvening the study group on this issue, if nothing else. I think you're going to miss a lot of, just opportunities for small, little cottage businesses to get a tiny foothold in this burgeoning market, and do it without making any impact. I've, I'm still the only open dispensary in the county, there's no line out my door, God knows I wish there was, but there's no line out my door. It's not, the sky's not falling, there's no crime, have you had any crime complaints? Like, it's just not happening. So, I, we're taking baby steps, we've taken baby steps, I'm asking, let's reconvene and see what else we can do on behalf of your community, it's not my personal interest.
Okay, well, thank you, Sutula.
Thank you so much.
Sibero?
Good evening, Mayor Johnston, council members, staff, chief. First of all, I just want to say Happy New Years to you guys, and also, I do want to express my prayers and thoughts to the people in Montecito. It's unfortunate, but I, as a county, a neighbor county, I just want to express just my support for them. With that said, I want to talk about a group that's been formed, and it's been formed by Peggy LaSara, and Councilmember Francina has been participating. This is about habitat restoration for the Ojai Valley, just as a whole. What do we do now that the fire has happened? And I'm glad to say that they reached out to the Green Coalition to see if we could try to facilitate, and I know Councilmember Francina will explain to you about what the groups are, but this is about networking, capturing the energy to really work as a community. The Ojai Land Conservancy was there, the Raptor Center was there, just the Ojai Ventura Trust, they, all the executive directors were there. This is to emphasize, what can we do for Mother Nature? And to be honest with you, the outcome that we came out with is, let it do its thing, really not disrupt the course of nature. I know there's going to be other opinions out there, but we want to get a group of people here in the valley to start working together and see if we could possibly do other things that could benefit the planet we're here, we're living in. So, we're going to have a second meeting, we had a first meeting this past Sunday, or this past Saturday, at Christine Golden's house, and so, the second meeting is going to be at the conference room behind the Twice Soul Tails on this Sunday, at January 14th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, and we do encourage everybody to come, and we encourage the council members, and Mayor Johnston, if you're interested in coming, because I think this group is really going to try to come up with something that's effective in terms of being able to educate people, and be, not just educate our residents, but our children. That's going to be important, because I, like I, when I was in council- That's going to be important because I, like I, when I was in council, I heard Chief Nor, Chief Norm say one time, it's like, it's not if a fire happens, it's when the fire happens. This is going to happen again, so we have to be prepared to know what steps to take in the future. So I invite you guys to come.
Thank you, Subaro. Craig Walker with Dale Hansen on deck. And she's already on deck.
Good evening. I want to share with you a presentation I made to the Parks and Recreation Commission last week. My name is Craig Walker. This is Mitch Mashburn. We are here this evening representing a group of Ojai Valley residents and former residents who communicate through Facebook on a site called The Other Ojai. The Other Ojai has nearly 4,000 members, including Mitch and myself and maybe some others here tonight, Susan. During the Thomas Fire, the group was very active in coordinating information about the fire and helping residents to respond to its threat. The group also played an important role in disseminating information about recovery and assistance for those affected by the fire. Much of the early information gathering and posting was led by former Ojai residents, some of them living in other states and countries. While Ojai residents were scrambling to evacuate, Richard Lobley in Paris, Nancy Jones in Henderson, Nevada, and Nancy Heron in Portland, Oregon were coordinating and posting information for local residents. Several firefighters commended The Other Ojai for its 24-hour vigilance and accurate reporting that helped prevent loss of life and property among the people of Ojai. It was with a heavy heart that members of The Other Ojai learned that, about the death of Escondido firefighter Cory Iverson. Though he died near Fillmore, he was battling the blaze that threatened our community. In 1917, when the great fire hit, it was up to local residents to man the fire lines. During the Thomas Fire, we were all able to safely evacuate while firefighters and inmates put their lives on the line. Cory Iverson made the ultimate sacrifice, leaving behind his wife and two daughters, one yet to be born. During the Wheeler Fire of 1985, firefighters also saved our community. Local residents headed by Pat Weinberger created a memorial at the Y to honor the firefighters of 1985. We feel this would be an ideal location to remember Cory Iverson. The Other Ojai would like to create a plaque to honor him. We hope that one day his two daughters will visit Ojai and be comforted in knowing that the people of Ojai remember their father and his sacrifice. We hope to place this plaque at the Y in the Little Memorial Park at the entrance to our city. Colleen McDougall is designing the plaque and she made a sample and will arrange for it to be cast in bronze. The Other Ojai will fund the plaque and all expenses related to its installation. We envision mounting it on the side of the existing large boulder, mounting it on a smaller boulder nearby, or bringing in a new boulder, whichever the city prefers. We give this, gave this presentation last Thursday to the Parks and Recreation Commission. We will meet with Sophocles, Kotsas, and Ryan Firestone to work out the details and we'll have it on their agenda February 1st. If they approve it, we, we will be back before the council, hopefully to get your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Very nice. Dale, you're up and Sarah, is this Osterstrom? Am I saying that right? Otter?
Hello, Dale Hansen, I live in the city. I, I received this notice, and I think all of you probably did too, but I just thought I'd bring it to everyone's attention that I think it's Friday morning at 9:30, the sanitary district's going to have a, an executive committee meeting with, um, Baggerly, Stone, and Kaiser. And it's something about disenfranchising the city of Ojai. I'm not sure what that means, but I think it means our rates may go up. And so it's, uh, it's this Friday, 9:30 at the sanitary district. I think they're on Tico. So I'm not sure what that means. If any of you know, might check into it.
Mr. Mayor Johnson? I can tell you that I am, as the liaison, the current liaison to the sanitary district, I forwarded that, I get that, I forwarded immediately to the staff who had never heard of it and are going to inquire. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I will be at that meeting at 9:30.
Okay. Sarah, you're up and Kathy Bennett is next.
My name is Sarah Otterstrom and this is my son Jonas Rutherford and Elliot Rutherford. And, you know, the, the very difficult, um, experience that we've had with the Thomas Fire and the heartbreaking tragedy, tragedy that are playing out in Montecito has reminded us of two really important values that we hold here in the Ojai Valley and what attracted me to move with my family to the Ojai Valley six years ago. And that is the environment and the natural environment and communities. Member, individual members of the community, people with families, people who are elderly, grownups, everybody's a valuable member of this community. Um, but there's some things that have been happening in the last year in my neighborhood that have, have challenged me and my belief and, um, in Ojai and its ability to give attention to both the environment and families and community. One year ago, the Ojai Valley Inn, when the, when there was a closure, they made a decision to take advantage of its closure, to cut down dozens of trees, um, unpermitted on their property. At that time, the, the, the city had an ordinance that said they couldn't do that. And, um, I reported it to the city and they were stopped. And later they proceeded and I never knew the outcome, despite complaining to the city. I never knew the outcome of any mitigation numbers, numbers that were made. Um, now, um, three months later, the city changed the ordinance, giving the green light for any commercial, um, commercially zoned property to cut down any tree it wants of any size unless it is an oak tree or a sycamore tree. So here we are in the holiday, right after the fire, and my neighborhood is suddenly being bombarded and on a January 1st holiday weekend with chainsaws. No notification to the neighbors, no, um, no consultation with the neighborhood and/or neighbors, including the president of the Ojai, um, the Ojai Trees Organization, including with myself, who I'm a PhD in, in forest ecology. And, and, and more critically, the, the, without considering the, the massive, the, the massive disruption that the Thomas Fires had on habitat for wildlife and doing this at a time when the city is vulnerable, hurting, communities are hurting from habitat loss, watching animals aimlessly wander the streets and going in and cutting down these trees that I am told are more than 60 years old. They're being replaced with non-native, non-fruiting olive trees that do not provide large, um, canopies and do not provide shade to my home. They will be increasing my energy costs without any consultation to me. The workers trespassed on my property. But more concerning than that is the whole process that has happened that over the last year, I've watched time and time again that the, the Ojai Valley Inn can do anything it wants without any question to what they're doing. And they, they can do things like dump hundreds, dozens of tons of dirt onto an open field on Ojai Avenue, taking out rodent habitat, raptor habitat, unpermitted. And, and we don't know, as citizens, we don't know the consequence. And what it's telling to me is that as, as a, as a person who's trying to raise myself, my family and a family in a town with a community, with children and where I don't have a voice, that my voice as a citizen does not matter and does not need to be listened to as much as a corp, as a, as a corporation, a private investment company, that yes, it provides jobs, but I provide jobs too. I pay taxes, I go to the grocery store, my children study in schools in the valley, I volunteer, I, 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 I teach Cub Scouts, I teach Sunday School.
Thank you for.
And my point is, is that I, I, I would really like to see the city council begin to, 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 to question when, when the citizens are not taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a comment. Sarah, Sarah, your voice does matter. And what you have communicated to us over the holidays, very important. I have every email that you sent here. I'm going to talk to you, I want to meet with you and take another look at the tree ordinance and prevent this, some of this in the future. Thank you.
Mayor Johnston, since councilperson Francina made a comment, I'd like to make one too.
Okay.
I want to state for the record a couple of things, because you and I don't agree on a lot of this. The trees we're talking about are glue, blue gum eucalyptus, which are classified by the highest authority in the state scientifically as an invasive species on the same order of negative impact to our habitat as a rundo. That's the highest scientific authority in the state makes that statement.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, that's a, that's a point of controversy.
This is about the comments, so, okay. Thank you, Sarah. Kathy Bennett with Scott Iker on deck.
I'm not prepared tonight because I was watching the news before. I'm a groupie. I come to a lot of the city council meetings. But the news tonight was just devastating about Montecito. And I just have to ask the question, because I'm a professional walker. I walk all the trails and streets and stuff, but is the difference between Montecito and us, the culverts and all the, the concrete waterways we have? Or could that have happened to us just by the weather tonight? This afternoon, actually, 2:00 in the morning? It's a question. I don't know the answer.
I'd be happy to talk to you about it to the degree I can answer, but not, we're not hearing the public comment, but I would be happy to have the conversation.
Yeah, I'm just really curious, because, you know, it's, it was like post-traumatic stress syndrome from the fire and now this is like just overwhelming. I mean, 13 people died. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, Scott?
As you shall be memorialized in our minutes of scoot, if we don't cry.
You took away my joke, but that's all right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead, use it.
I'm here as the immediate past president of the Chambers of Commerce Alliance of Ventura and Santa Barbara Counties. And, uh, I know that you here are aware that a lot of people think that they can probably do a better job as an elected official than some of you sitting here tonight. And to that end, the Chamber Alliance is putting on a campaign school to help anyone get more involved in local politics. And that school is going to happen on Saturday, January 20th, from 9:00 to 1:00. It'll be held at the Oxnard Chamber of Commerce. The cost is $25 a person. And they will discuss things such as campaign management, mobilizing grassroots, media communications, and political fundraising. So if any of you out there have a, an interest in becoming a political candidate, whether local or even on a more grand scale, I will be putting, um, these flyers out here in the foyer. They will also be posted on the Chamber's Facebook page and, uh, or you can call our office and get copies of these. Or if you have a fabulous memory, you can just RSVP to venturachamber.com/campaign. But these will be right out front and it's an, it's an excellent opportunity to learn what it takes to be a political candidate. And while it may help you start your campaign, it may also dissuade you from running. Thank you.
If meetings like this don't. Okay, thanks, Scott. Uh, Ron? And we have Jane Walter in the queue here.
All right, thank you. Good evening, members of council. Uh, my name is Ron Solorsano and I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. Uh, I'll be brief, but I have one piece of big news that I wanted to share with all of you. And that is that the Ojai Library has brought on a new youth librarian. Her name is Laura Pendleton and she began work this month. Uh, Laura takes over after Julie retired, uh, in mid-December. And Laura brings with her years of experience in public libraries and is real eager to get to know the Ojai community and begin offering all of the wonderful services that you've come to expect from us and more. So if any of you get the chance, uh, please feel free to stop by the library, say hello to Laura. She's, uh, real eager to meet all of you and all the members of the community. Uh, beyond that, I just wanted to say that we've got a great month of programming coming up at the library. Uh, we're getting back to normal, getting back into the swing of things. Uh, minor setbacks today with the rain. I apologize for the rain hair. It was a heck of a day. But, uh, we've got local author Pat Hartman presenting her book Lonesome Mountain on January 13th. And then we've got Shirley Waxman from the Santa Barbara Museum of Art, uh, giving a talk on pop art and the American dream on January 20th. Then local author Fred Whitman will be presenting his book, The Ghost of Saddle Mountain, on January 27th. And then Bonnie Landau presenting a workshop on calming the hyper child on January 28th. Uh, so you can find more information on all of these events on our website, Uh, so yeah, thank you so much. And as always, feel free to ask me any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Do you second, do you have?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, very quickly, just while, while Mr. Solersano was there, just very quickly, just want to mention that one other announcement. You have a new library director, Nancy Schramm. And I had the pleasure of meeting her last Friday along with Ron in the office. So thank you very much. It was a very much a pleasure to meet Nancy and to know that we're continuing to be in good hands. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, Jane, you're up with Deborah Pendry on deck.
Hi, good evening, esteemed council members and ma, mayor. I'd like to begin by thanking you for your service and dedication to our community. My name is Jane Walter and I am here representing Help of Ojai. In addition to my role as case manager, I am working closely with our executive director, Terry Wolf, on fire relief efforts. I'd like to take a minute to brief you on our organization's efforts to assist the Ojai Valley community rebound from the devastation caused by the Thomas Fire. Currently, our Phase 1 efforts are focused on supporting individuals through a fire relief grant application we produced and have been using to make appropriate financial awards based on need. The relief grants in Phase 1 provide support and assistance for the following expenses, as long as they are fire-related. Reimbursements for evacuation expenses, including travel, lodging, and food. Financial assistance for people with loss of wages to help pay rent, car payments, utility bills, and other expenses. Hotel, hotel stays for people who have lost their homes and were without any type of insurance on their dwelling. Financial support for families to park trailers, RVs, at county and state parks for the foreseeable future. As for this afternoon, as of this afternoon, 115 applications have been submitted at our office on Fox Street. And $50,000 have been collected, distributed to Ojai Valley residents and accounted for by our organization. Help is also working to rapidly, to rapidly locate RVs, trailers, and other forms of shelter to house those who are without a dwelling. The deadline for Phase 1 fire relief grant application is January 19th. Phase 2 efforts have begun and are comprised of extensive case management support for those who are homeless and without resources, as well as those facing homelessness due to financial difficulty as a result of the fire. We envision Phase 2 to be a one-to-two-month process for displaced community members and a 12-to-18-month process for Help of Ojai as an organization. Uh, Phase 2 will involve working with government partners, primarily the county of Ventura, as well as other stakeholders and assistance programs to identify creative solutions to housing-related obstacles in Ojai. Help has received an outpouring of in-kind donations and financial support from all over the country, primarily from Southern California and particularly Ventura County and our own Ojai Valley. 100% of these fire-directed donations will be spent helping our community. No administrative fees will be used from this fund. Um, and in addition to our fire relief efforts, Help of Ojai continues to run all regular programming and did so with very limited interruption throughout the fire's duration. Um, community members with any questions about the fire application or what we're doing out of the Community Assistance Program office are welcome to call us at 640-3320 or pop into our office at 108 Fox Street.
Thank you, Jane. Deborah, and then we have, uh, is this Simon or Simone?
Simone.
Simone.
Thank you, Mayor Johnston. Uh, Deborah Pendry, I'm wearing two hats tonight. The first hat is my Ojai Valley Green Coalition hat. And I'm announcing the Coalition's 10th Annual E-Waste Collection and Recycling Event. This year, we're Saturday, January 20th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's a rain or shine event. And this year, we're moving to the Nordoff High School parking lot. And just so you have an idea of things that we take, uh, any electronics, CPUs, monitors, printers, TVs, electronic accessories, small appliances. Um, your gauge for that is if it has a cord and you can fit it on your counter, you can bring that, like lamps and vacuum cleaners. Washing machines, not so much. Okay, stereo equipment, ink and laser cartridges, iPods and cell phones, household batteries, and, uh, any kind of media storage. VHS, 8-tracks, cassette tapes, floppy, floppy disk CDs, DVDs. Uh, and also old incandescent holiday lights. We have a place where we can get those, um, recycled for you. So we couldn't do this without the financial support of the city of Ojai and our partners, the Ojai Valley Directory, the Ojai Unified School District, Gold Coast Recycling and Transfer Station, and E.J. Harrison. Transfer Station, and E.J. Harrison &amp; Son. And of course, volunteers are a big factor for this. So if you'd like to come help us, you can call the Coalition, talk to Noel at 805-669-8445. And now, with my Deborah hat on and starting a new year, I'd like to thank the council for Resolution Number 17-30, the Ojai City Council's support of the Paris Climate Agreement, pledging to continue the city's efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and registering the City of Ojai as a signatory to the "We are still in effort." For these many years, I've shared that I'm a pessimist, optimistically trying to prove myself wrong. But author and activist Rebecca Solnit has given me pause with her perspective. She shares in her book, Hope in the Dark. Optimists think all will be fine without our involvement. Pessimists take the opposite position. Both excuse themselves from acting. Now, hope. Hope locates itself in the premises that we don't know what will happen, and that in the spaciousness of uncertainty is room to act. Authentic hope requires clarity, seeing the troubles in the world, and imagination, seeing what might lie beyond these situations that are perhaps not inevitable and immutable. She reminds us, the future is not written yet. Hope means another world might be possible, not promise, not guaranteed. Hope calls for action. Action is impossible without hope. Thank you again for your hope and your action.
Thank you, Deborah.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I come before you tonight not to rag on our local police department, but rather to offer constructive criticism so that hopefully other citizens will not be subject to the same frustrations I recently experienced. A few months ago, I received a call from a collection agency telling me I was delinquent with a gas bill. It turned out the bill was on a property I did not own for an account I had not authorized. The gas company acknowledged I did not open the account, but said someone else had using my personal information. They would not give me any more information without a police report. Simple, right? I went down to the Ojai Police Department. I was left in the lobby for over an hour. Eventually, an officer came to the lobby. I noted that this officer had been sitting in the office the whole time I was waiting, hopefully doing important other work. He chose to conduct his interview with me in the public lobby, which I found a little disquieting, what if my case had been of a sensitive nature? After I explained why I was there, he surprised me by telling me he could not issue a police report because he did not know that a crime had occurred. I have to digress and tell you that I represented battered women as a pro bono attorney for 15 years. I would always caution my clients when the police were called out to their home on a domestic violence incident. The client should insist on getting a police report. I would always tell the clients that the police would probably not want to write that report because it causes them more work. I did not know this firsthand, but rather because other attorneys had told me this was the case, so I always emphasized to the client that they must insist. Yet, when I was in exactly the same position, did I insist on a report? No. I left frustrated and rejected and spent an extra month of misery trying to clear my good name. I am bringing this issue to your attention because I do not want other citizens, especially vulnerable people like battered women, to be turned away and placed in a situation I found myself in that day. I felt that the police department fell short of its duty when it turned me away. The consequences could have been much more dire if I had not had education and resources to solve my problem despite that rejection. And on one last point that the department should take note of, California Penal Code 530.6 requires law enforcement to take and report a report and provide the complainant with a copy of that report when a person reasonably suspects that their personal identifying information has been used by another. Thank you.
I'm sure the sheriff will look into that. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the conclusion of the public comments. We are now on consent agenda. Before I had a point of order called, Bill, where were we? Did we approve the motion?
We had.
We had, okay, so now we're...
We were just going to talk to Item C. Item C.
Did we vote on the... I know we had a motion and a second. I don't think we voted on it.
I believe there was a vote on Items...
There's no objection.
Yeah, I have it recorded as a vote, too.
Thanks for asking.
And Bill nailed me then, okay.
Yeah, I think it's just Items 1, C, and D left.
Okay, it's Randy's turn. Item C.
I just wanted to bring up the fact that, again, in our accounting procedures, this has been brought up by you, Mayor, and also Councilman Wyrick, about how we handle our reserves. And again, if Rudy could come... Oh, Rudy is here. Hi, Rudy. If you could just explain once again on Page 111 or Page 3 of 3, Attachment A, I see a general fund cash account of $3,313,000, and so I'm assuming that that's what our reserve is. And then I see all of the additional funding accounts or cash accounts, and I sensed that all of those were added in to come up to our $4.9 million reserve. And I was just wondering if that allowed, if that was how we wanted to account for...
That was the same question I was going to ask. I think one of the issues is how we define the reserve.
Exactly.
In my experience, I define the reserve as unrestricted, unallocated cash. Then that's your savings account. We apparently have a much broader definition, just saying under the control of the general fund, and in some cases, I think it's even with a receivable. Is it not in the redevelopment money?
Well, let me explain. First of all, I agree with you 100% that I do not like the definition that we have of reserves. Several years ago, council passed a reserve policy requiring that the city maintain reserves equal to 50% of the upcoming year's general fund budget. Okay? And, Mr. Mayor, you, having been in this business long enough, you hit it right on the nail, right on the head. And that's exactly one of the issues that I have been struggling with in trying to come out with these. So we have issues here that, first of all, reserves can be defined in a lot of different ways. Are we talking about cash reserves? Are we talking about financial reserves? Which we're talking about fund balance essentially versus cash in the bank. It's not defined in the policy the way it's written. Okay? So that's one of our number-one problems. Number 2 is the policy was implemented in a time before we had several of these other funds out there, when Fund 31 did not exist. And so the capital projects, a lot of those were being actually taken care of in the general fund or another fund at the time, which was partly a grants fund. So our structure has changed significantly since the time when that policy was done. I think council, they were trying to do the right thing and trying to set money aside for the future needs of the city. And I think my interpretation of that is not really that they're talking about reserves, they're talking about cash balances. Now, I would say that in the item that we took to council on the investment policy, I had a little bit of information in there on how I want to restructure things, and I intend to bring something back to council in the coming months on a change in the policy because I believe that what we really should be looking at, first of all, is we should have some long-term reserves that are not touchable reserves, really. And, you know, roughly, we have roughly about $5 million, you know, total cash, give and take, depending on the time of year and everything. And based upon, you know, my quick estimate is I think we should have about $1 million and a half dollars sitting in that long-term reserve, where we're going to actually invest those funds out on a four- and five-year on the cycle because we can't invest anything as a local government any longer than five years. So that's why I'm thinking we want to split those up. We want to have some intermediate things, which are kind of our savings accounts, which is probably, you know, 30% to 40% of the cash balances, and then we want to have a piece of it that's in our operating and current cash levels. And so that is not defined at all in that policy that was written previously.
But who has defined it? Because we get a report that somebody defined it.
We have a report, and we are going on the best information that we have, that, you know, what we're looking at is when that policy was enacted, those things that are being included in the... So if you look at that total $4.9 million, that's our total cash balance. Okay? The number on the right is the stuff that's under the control of the general fund, which, when the policy was enacted, those would be the things that would have been in that umbrella back in that time. So the treasurer and I have had this discussion. We've talked about things, and I don't think it's clear, and I want to bring it back to council, and I want to actually, I want to define this thing very clearly so that we are all on the same page with this.
If the city manager will furnish the council with a copy of that resolution, and then we can sit down, Randy, and define it, and then bring it back to council.
I actually had one more suggestion on this, and what I would like to see is, I just heard two things. We need to define the reserve policy, and then through that defining, we'll have a division of reserves and then some investment funds. I think what I would like to propose is that Mayor Johnson, Councilman Wyrick, yourself, Rudy, and city manager form a committee and actually deal with this...
Okay, we have a subcommittee already.
So deal with this outside of that, and then come back to us with your recommendations on this new definition.
Okay, put that up. You know, do we have that date set for the sub...
I'd like to set a date.
Well, I've asked for a meeting.
I'm talking about a date for the revised recommendation to come back to this.
Oh, I see, right.
And I would suggest the first meeting in April.
We can probably do better than that. Mr. City Manager, would you give me a date tomorrow on when the subcommittee is going to meet?
Sure.
And we will put that on there with a couple of other items that I have, then we'll get it back to council probably in February.
And again, not too far out in the future. That's why I wanted a date certain.
Yeah, and I've already been working on some of my thoughts on how I believe that the thing should be structured, and I think once we sit down and talk about these things, I think we're going to be able to come to an agreement on these things in a relatively short period of time, I believe.
Well, I actually like the fact that you're saying, let's say we had our cash on hand at $3.3 million that you're saying set aside into the general fund as emergency use as there, and then actually taking a part of that and investing it in a five-year money market or something that's going to generate us more income, rather than what are we generating right now off of it?
Well, right now, I've actually begun...
We're doing better.
I've actually begun the process of investing out on the four- and five-year, and I've actually got one investment right now that's getting us 2.6%, 5%. I've got another one that's 2.5%, another one's 2.3%, but I'm just starting those, you know, starting to pull those out.
I'm going to call this item to a close for tonight. I appreciate it, Rudy. The city manager... Yep, okay. We got a motion to approve C. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objection? If not, so ordered. Which one did I have on the minutes?
D.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, that was just a receive and file, so there wasn't really any approval. Unless you had something more into it. You had talked about spelling errors.
No, I was talking, the item that concerned me was the vagueness of the issue that we had in here. Let me see if I got the minutes of the, I think they're the 15th. I'll find it here. The vagueness on the issue of conducting audits, like on the TOT audit. It was just a general statement saying that we all agreed that it would be done in-house, and that was not my recollection of what we all agreed to.
It is one of 16. It is H, Transient Occupation Tax Audit Plan. One of 16.
One of 16? Sorry, thank you, Randy.
H. I stumbled on it.
Well, okay. You stumbled better than I did, yeah. Hold on, it's in here.
I have the new right hand, you know that.
Where is it? 116?
1-16. 1-16.
What I'm looking... My concern, and we don't have to resolve it tonight, but my understanding, at least what I was intending to indicate, that there are certain things that are the ongoing, daily kind of housekeeping, routine responsibilities of a finance office, of which oversight of spot auditing, to be sure that if there are taxes to be collected or fees to be collected, that they are being properly collected. And it shouldn't come to us as a special yes or no, will you fund this for this year? It should just be part of the budget that comes in, and we should be doing it. And whether it's done with a contractor or done with the staff doesn't make any difference to me. It just should be an obligation of the finance office to be looking after these things and not an obligation of the city council to decide when it should be done. So I'll bring it back next week so we don't take any more time, our next meeting.
So I mean, we'll leave the minutes not approved?
Well, we can approve the minutes, but I'm just saying that it was so vague, it just simply said that the council was in agreement that this should be done by the staff, and I don't think that gives the kind of direction that apparently is necessary to get...
We can always amend the minutes.
Right, well, yeah, I'll just bring it back, and we'll have a motion on it.
It is vague, I agree, because it says, "I made a motion that audits be handled in-house by staff," and that didn't get a second, and then later on it says, "The council and city manager agreed it should be handled by in-house staff." It didn't make any sense to me either. I think that we can simply amend that now, Mr. Mayor. We had indicated that it needed to be done, and it needed to be brought, the decision on how it was going to be handled was going to be done by the city manager. That's what the ultimate decision was, that it was going to be an item that they were going to put in the budget, and however he saw a fit to be able to audit it, it was up to the staff to audit it, not to come to us to say we needed it to be audited.
If I could suggest some language, I think the sense of the council was that this should be a recurring, part of a recurring work plan, a recurring administrative work plan in the Finance Department, not something that comes every time it's done to council. I think that's the sense.
Right, yeah. The concern is that we should not be having to give specific direction to staff as to how to do these things. That's a management decision, and I think, as Paul said, the agreement was, or at least the sense of the council was, that the city manager and the finance director, we shouldn't be having, you know, responses that say, "Yeah, I would have liked to have done it that way, too. You guys are in charge of doing it, and we would like you to take care of it," and it should be part of our budget every year without anybody having to go through the line items to find it. Otherwise, there's no way for us to know, you know, well, we're not doing our job if we have to go through and...
Well, I agreed on the 12th. I will agree again tonight, and we understand our direction.
Mr. Mayor, then I move to approve Item D.
Second.
I'll craft some language.
As amended by our discussion tonight.
So the minutes are approved. They aren't, they're not offensive, they're just not helpful. Okay, so we were going to go to Item Number 7, that Michelle and others don't have to spend the rest of their evening away from the family, except for us political junkies. We have two items, one that was in your packet and one that is a follow-up or sort of a support for the program. Steve, you want to introduce the item?
Yes, thank you. This is for the LA Community Choice Energy. Correct we are on that item?
Right.
Okay. As council will recall, we had adopted an urgency ordinance back in December in order to meet the deadline to apply. This item is for the second reading of approval of the ordinance that would replace the urgency ordinance and create a permanent ordinance. So that item is before the council tonight. It was introduced at your previous meeting. And the second recommended action is for the council to appoint a member of the council as the city's representative on the Board of Directors and alternates as desired. I do have information on that meeting as well. Very quickly, the next meeting will be held January 17th at the Metropolitan Water District Headquarters on Almaty Street in downtown LA, and that meeting will be held at 2:00 p.m. So that's January 17th at 2:00 p.m. In addition, we do have a request from Councilmember Wyrick to send a letter to the Public Utilities Commission. There are some questions right now being raised at the Public Utilities Commission that are being raised by the utility providers regarding some of the entities that are seeking to come into the LACC, and that includes some of the ones that have expressed interest from Ventura County. That matter is scheduled to be heard, I believe, by the PUC on January 11th, and...
January 11th is the deadline for comments.
Oh, thank you.
I believe the meeting is now February 8th.
Thank you. So that was the deadline we were trying to make.
Deadline for comments is January 11th.
So as city manager, I would certainly recommend that we do send a letter to follow up on Councilmember Wyrick's thoughts, expressing our concerns to the PUC that they do not delay the entry of other entities into the Community Choice Energy system. Have to answer any questions.
I have two cards. Let's start with Michelle.
Good evening, everyone. Michelle Ellison, resident of Ojai and on the board of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. Just here again tonight to express my gratitude that Ojai will be joining... that Ojai will be joining LACC E and in that, Ojai residents and businesses will benefit from energy choice. Currently, we only can get our electricity from Edison and now we can choose from, between Edison and LACC E. We'll have projected cost savings, greater local control and most importantly for me is the more renewable energy. We have a choice between 33%, 50% and 100%. So, LACC E is a great opportunity for us to make some real progress as a community on a clean energy goal. So, I applaud you all for your leadership in getting us to this point now. There are several other cities in our county, as you might be aware, that have joined. Thousand Oaks, Oxnard, the County of Ventura, then there's us. Tomorrow, I believe Camarillo will be looking at it on their agenda and then the other cities in our county are also considering it very closely as well. So, a lot of momentum happening for LACC E. As was just mentioned, there is a potential threat right now to all CCEs in the state by this draft resolution put forth by the California Public Utilities Commission. It's Draft Resolution E. 4907 and they are scheduled to meet on February 8th to discuss. And right now, there is an effort across the board by all of us who are participating in CCEs to express our opposition for this resolution which would slow down or stop the formation of new and emerging CCEs. LACC E is one of those included. So, that would delay our participation by a year or two, which again would mean a delay in cost savings, renewable energy, all of the things that we're looking for, depending fitting from. So, I appreciate you taking action on expressing formal opposition to that resolution. And then I would also like to urge any members of the public to also contact the CPUC between now and January 11th, which is their timeframe for formal comment. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Sabaro? Or Sabero, pardon me.
Yes, Mayor Johnson, City Council members also want to support this resolution and I strongly recommend that we do send a letter to CPUC. I don't wanna go into my thoughts about that aid organization, but I do think that standing united with the rest of the CCE communities would be extremely important.
Okay, thank you Sabero. Okay.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
I have an offer and a motion.
Okay.
Bill, I just, can I interject something before you make your motion? I just would, I have the letter or the newspaper article from the Ventura County Star and I'd like to just publicly thank Bob Daddy for sending this out and making all of us aware of it. And that's pretty much how we all came to conclusion that we needed to champion this some way somehow. And I'll turn the floor over to you, Bill.
I'm just gonna make a motion that we, there's two parts to this recommendation and part one is to make a motion to adopt an ordinance to join the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Joint Powers Authority and to delegate to Mayor Johnson, myself, the task of drafting and sending a letter to the CPUC opposing Draft Resolution E. Dash 4907.
I'll second. And I have a question. Do we need to make a motion to send Mayor Johnson to the meetings?
In, in Sacramento?
No.
That's a separate issue.
That's a separate, that's a separate issue.
I haven't got there yet.
Okay, so we have a motion to, what, second reading, approval of second reading on the ordinance and to delegate or designate Councilman Wyrick, what you may have wrote down, but that's.
No, he's not anymore.
Right, not anymore, okay. And the mayor to, to draft a letter and get it off post haste. Any further comment? If not.
Is that your motion?
That was.
My, my.
And seconded by Susan. Right, okay. If there's no objection, so ordered. Can we do it that way?
I think we need to, can we do a roll call? To adopt an ordinance?
Do we need a roll call?
There's no actual requirement for a roll call, but it doesn't hurt to make the minutes clear.
Okay, go ahead. Call the roll.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Can I just ask a que, do you want us to read the letter and say anything or?
No.
No, just.
We'll, we'll sit out. We, this was based on a model letter with some modification, but the two of us will sit down and see if we can tailor anything for, for the specialness of Ojai. I'm sure they'll be thrilled to hear from us.
So, on, on recommendation two, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That, um, as I, as I read through the guidelines here, one, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we approve Councilmember Wyrick as our representative on the Board of Directors and two, if Michelle would be interested in being our alternate, because of your background, your experience and what you've brought to the community, I'd have no problem asking her to be our alternate. So, that would be my motion.
Okay.
Plus a nomination, right?
Nomination.
Okay. Well, I would like to, if, if, if he wants to, I'd like to nominate our mayor to be the representative.
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay.
I, I think, I'm perfectly willing to defer to the mayor on this.
Okay, agreed.
Yeah, but I like the idea of, of, Michelle, are you willing to accept being alternate?
I am willing to accept that position. I know there are some, I think there are.
Does it have to be elected official?
The requirement is not for the alternate to be an elected official, however, the alternate must be one of several criteria, which includes a member of the public who meets specified criteria defined as demonstrated knowledge in energy-related matters through experience in an electric utility company, regulatory government agency overseeing electric utility or academic or nonprofit engaged in research and/or advocacy related to the electric sector. I believe.
Ding ding ding, she qualifies.
Your service on the OV, Ojai Valley Green Coalition would qualify.
Great. That's what I read into it.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Great.
Then I would, I would concur with the nomination of Mayor Johnston as the representative with Michelle as lay as the alternate.
Okay, is that a second?
Yes.
Okay.
And you can go to Metropolitan on the 17th.
Yeah, right, my old neighborhood.
Have fun.
Is that the one you said you were gonna go to, because we hadn't made a vote?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Done.
New job.
Okay, now, we're back into the regular order here.
Cultural Resources.
All right.
Number two.
Okay. Steve, are you gonna introduce it?
Mr. Winiger will be giving the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last year, the council formed an ad hoc committee to review the city's cultural, cultural resources policy and with particular emphasis on looking at the administration of ministerial, or the administration of review of ministerial permits. Those are permits that are approved at the staff level that don't go to the planning commission or city council to look at ways that we can improve the process and take the ambiguity that exists from time to time out of that process. The council appointed Mayor Protem Haney and Councilman Wyrick and they solicited the input of several community members, including Julie Tumay, Stensley, Dawn Theding and Andrew Stossi. And together, that group, along with staff support, met several times and produced several documents which are included in your packet this evening. The first document is Exhibit A, or Attachment A, rather, in your staff report and this is a matrix which attempts to provide as much objectivity as possible to identifying what the appropriate level of review, cultural resources review is for a particular type of permit. And I want to thank Dawn in particular for her assistance in, in assisting with this, the formulation of this matrix. It was a collaborative effort and although there is a lot of, as, as I mentioned, attempt to provide as much objectivity to, in here, there still will be some subjectivity in the administration of things like emergency permits and some other things which I'll mention. But again, the attempt here is to identify and there will be some subsequent work required by archaeologists to implement this. That will come back before the council at a later date, but to identify known properties with known resources, properties which we believe may have resources on them and then to identify those properties which most likely do not have resources. So, right now, the city uses what's commonly referred to as a heat map based on documented information regarding known cultural resources. And then that is the basis for which we identify when a preliminary archaeological assessment is necessary or a SEQA review might be appropriate. So, what we would like to do in the future, what the committee decided, is that it would be appropriate to generate a list based on assessors' parcels of these known resource categories. And then, depending on that, we would be able to, to determine what the level of review is for these different types of permits which are identified in the left-hand column. So, where there is a no-known resource and where there's very low, very little, very little opportunity or very little likelihood of a known resource, there would be no review required for that type of ministerial permit. This chart also provides for exemptions, exceptions for emergencies. It provides for exemptions for, for certain situations. For instance, any prop, according to this proposal, any property which would have construction on it which is over 20,000 square feet would automatically be required a PA, even though it may, might meet one of the, the exemptions. It's above in the, in the matrix. That is because those properties are large enough. We don't know what may be there. If it's under 20,000 square feet, the matrix would apply. There would be special circumstances in which a PA would be required, including the construction of a swimming pool where right now it may or may not be required, for instance. Exhibit, or Attachment B contains a flow chart which would, again, more clearly indicate the path that a particular review would take based on the type of permit. And this chart has been vetted by, by the staff that administer the program and we think this would be very helpful not only to property owners, contractors and what have you, but it would be very helpful internally to the staff to make sure that the proper path is taken depending on the type of permit and the type of review that is, that is being sought here. And then lastly, Attachment C contains some process improvements related to the actual follow-up or, or monitoring of construction that involves potential archaeological resources, cultural resources. We've had an opportunity now in the last year to identify those situations where we've had monitoring. We think there's room for improvement in the selection process for appropriate monitors, the requirement for reporting, both daily reports and summary reports, and then how those reports are shared with the appropriate parties. So, with that, I'm gonna conclude my remarks and suggest that the council consider remarks from the ad hoc committee members at this time.
So, just a quick detail question, okay? And I hate to be this picky, but we're looking at a document here.
Mm-hmm.
When there's a footnote on Attachment B, that say on PA two, footnote two, is that the same footnote as in Attachment A? In other words, is the structure to have the footnotes on any attachment refer to, you see what I'm trying to say?
Yes, and that I think the two should be omitted on the chart, on the flow chart.
On, on the flow chart?
Yes.
Okay. That, just, that's the kind of thing that, you know, if you don't, if you don't adopt it, if you adopt it without being careful about that kind of thing, that's the kind of thing that causes endless headaches.
Absolutely. And, and Mr. Mayor, I should point out that what we're looking for here is your general concurrence with this approach that the committee is bringing to you. And if you, if you endorse this, the city attorney and planning staff would work to bring to you a new resolution which incorporates these.
And just a quick follow-up with your indulgence.
But, but, just so I understand what you just said, you're saying that this is being recommended by the committee and that if this is, appears acceptable to the council, that we will then go to the next step of investing the city attorney's and the city manager's time in crafting what will be enacted as the law, which will be reflection of this. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
That is correct. And if, one brief point to add to that, the approach that we've identified as a viable option is a resolution similar to the 2015 resolution that was adopted imposing the current preliminary archaeological assessment process. Because these are structured as application requirements, they do not need to be accomplished via an ordinance. So, that should be a faster process.
And what is the advantage of not doing it by ordinance?
The advantage comes in time and flexibility, but it is, of course, the council's choice.
Flexibility.
Okay, seriously, okay.
No, if you find a problem with what we did, we can change it faster.
Right.
Just to finish my comment, I just, I wanna say that I, I think this approach, you know, Councilman Haney and I have supported this in, in, in basic principles. We, just in the last few days, have come up with some fine tuning and so I think that, at least what I'm gonna be hoping for is that we, we maybe talk about the principles and we talk about a few fine tuning issues, but not get into a extensive deliberation to refer it back to staff and for Councilman, I would include Councilman Haney and myself in engaging in that fine tuning.
Agreed.
I have two, you know, we, we developed two pages of notes about clarifying thing here in the last week, but this is not the time to deliberate every single one of those points. But I think a couple of the highlights I might bring up later in the deliberation after public comment.
Agreed. I think what we're looking for here is general concurrence by the council that this approach is, is, makes sense in terms of the administration of the program.
I have a question. Did you say you have two pages of notes? Is that something that you're gonna pass around?
Yes, I could. Yeah, I just didn't, I didn't want to get us bogged down today.
Yeah, right. I don't think, we're, we're not gonna get into that.
I hope not.
Okay, well, what, what did you say at the previous meeting process here? Okay, we have something.
We have, we have cards.
Okay, we have some, yeah, we're gonna have some, we're gonna get some input from the community. We have a, this is something that the committee generally and the staff, everybody is in concurrence with. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Except for the, what you call fine tuning, which needs to then be.
Right.
Okay, why don't we go to the comments?
First of all, Mayor, before we do comments, I just wanna clarify. The, the committee was Councilman Wyrick and myself and we included staff and we included some input from, again, Dawn, Julie and from Mr. Agassi. But Councilman Wyrick and I are the ones who are technically generated this report and this report is coming from us. That's why we came back with the two pages of corrections based on some additional comments that we received and looking at this and trying to make it just a better format for us. So, we can open this to the public, we can get their input, but when it's said and done, we're gonna ask that we go back and meet with staff.
Okay, but then we're gonna have to do this again, right, later?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, if you want, we could. I don't need to see that list. I mean, that's, I wanna hear what the public has to say about this in general. I have my feelings about it in general.
Okay.
But if, if you're gonna have to go back and tweak this, I'd rather have you go back and tweak it and then bring it back to us.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I would too.
That's right.
So, this, do we have a motion to?
Well, we have public.
I strongly recommend at least taking the public comment you have now and then continuing the item.
Here from the public.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, fine, great, yeah. Dawn, with Julie on deck.
And, and, and maybe after they've heard us speak, that they may want to hold their comments back and wait for it to come back to council. We'll leave it up to them.
Were, were you gonna present your?
We have to hear you first.
I am having a little difficulty with this. If this is going to be recrafted in some fashion, we're gonna do this twice then.
Yeah.
And we've done it a half a dozen times before. It seems like it's not quite ready. I think we, since Dawn is here and she's been invited up, well, we'll certainly hear from her, but we had to think this through a little bit. We could be here all night on.
Right.
Everything. Dawn, go ahead. What, what's on your mind?
Uh, thank you. Good evening. As was discussed, we came together to find a workable solution to protecting known sites, identifying possible sites and mitigating potential impact to resources. And the goal was to be simple and transparent in the approach. And overall, we do feel that we achieved that goal. We developed the matrix by permit levels, emergency, discretionary projects. Those which are subject to SEQA must follow state regulations, so that's a given. SEQA exempt projects, we recommended follow the procedures that Ventura County Ojai Area Plan Cultural Resources undergo, which is shooting it up to the CRIS system, a state system for discussion. And that left us with the ministerial activities. And we had agreed in the committee that based on, with the ministerial activities would be exempt unless they are within a sensitive area based on location, if major earth disturbance was involved or if there was a cumulative impact, which are spelled out in. was involved, or if there was a cumulative impact, which are spelled out in the matrix. Since the committee met, there were changes that were made from what the committee had discussed. So the packet before you in yellow highlights the areas that, I'll just be frank, we are not in agreement with. We had not discussed those or come to a consensus in the committee. And the green line shows the suggested changes. So what you have before you is your Attachment A, which we've annotated. And then the second page to that is the issues that we have identified where we are not in agreement. One is the distance from known site. We had discussed 500 feet, that was changed to 300 feet. Exceptions based on lot size and previous construction. Those exceptions do not rule out the existence of cultural resources. We've, we've talked about this a few times, that you can still have cultural resources in disturbed areas, and the presence of cultural resources is not based on lot sizes. So we would ask for amendments to those. And we really have tried to, in reality, we believe that every property should be surveyed, but we know that that's not a feasible approach. We recognize that, and this matrix was an approach to streamline the process. We do ask that accidental discovery language be included on all city permits. And we also recommend, as staff recommended, to ensure that archaeologists and Native Americans are qualified, the generation of the APN listing, and conducting phase-one surveys and observing behaviors. Pat and Julie can give you example, I think after example, of the concerns we have about 300 feet versus 500 feet, given actual site boundaries versus recorded site boundaries and also previous disturbance. So I would, in summary, urge you to err on the side of caution with this decision and to be conservative in your decision. Please practice do no harm to Ojai's cultural resources, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you. Oh, and one other thing, also included in your packet are two letters that did not make it into the council packet. One is archaeologist John Foster. We had asked him to review this revised approach and comment on the approach that, the approach that was contained in your packet. And also a letter from archaeologist Bob Lopez. He had submitted a letter to the city in June 2016 and its general best practices for cultural resources, and his comments were based on an article from the Ojai Valley News.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, after hearing Don's comments, I, I can't see how this, this item is ready for us. Yeah, we just received something that has changes. I think it needs to go back to the committee. I think the two council members that are on that committee need to put their thoughts into whatever this draft is and have it come back before us. Because at this point, I'm more than happy to listen, but we don't have anything to vote on. And until we have a final product, I don't see why we should really be going through this process and taking the valuable time of the council when we really don't have anything in front of us.
I, I would agree, and do we have, we have to listen to all the comments, right?
You might offer the commentators the opportunity to hold their comments until the council releases the revised document, because commenting at this time on this document is commenting on a draft. That may not be the most helpful.
And so I, if we, if it's an order, I would move that we continue this to the first meeting in February.
I'm hearing two different things. What is being suggested by the city attorney is, is that we offer the opportunity to comment, but with the understanding that what you're going to be commenting on is not what we're going to be voting or discussing at the next meeting. So I would hope that we would, you took the time to come out, we'll hear from you, but please make it short, because we may be talking about something different by the time. Okay, we got Julie with Pat on deck.
Hello, Mayor Johnston, staff, council members. Our hearts go out in prayers to the people in Carpentry and Montecito, and our hearts are filled with sorrow for the loss of lives there tonight. Briefly, what I gave you is just something, something a little added that will refer to the 500 distance. Take a while to look at that, and knowing that our culture isn't in parcels, and where we don't know where exactly boundaries are, the limit that was set, the 300 feet, will give you an example that we would completely miss a site by not consulting or having any phase ones. So with that said, we've been at this for, what now, three years? And, and we had many meetings where we said, let's take our time, let's do this right. This is still, even when we come back with this, there's still going to be some room to change if things aren't working right. It is definitely something that we want to keep fluid, because archaeology is a science for archaeologists, but on the tribal level, it's fluid. And we never know what we're going to hit, where we're going to hit it, or when we're going to hit it. The disturbance, I am concerned about that. So again, in developed 1950s track homes, there are things that can be hit. In our city of Ojai, we have older homes that are small, that don't fit that 22, you know, 100 square feet, you know, they're small. And the properties, the houses are on raised foundations, very little impact. So those are things to consider when, when making these decisions on the protection of our culture, which is thousands of years old and really right under our feet. And so in order to save that non-renewable resource is, is a very, again, we want to educate everybody, and we welcome questions from, from you, from the public, from staff. And we'll continue this as long as we need to.
Okay.
We're okay.
Well, thank you, because it is going to be continued tonight, so it doesn't require too much more. But thank you, Julie, I appreciate you coming out on a stormy night. Patrick.
Good evening, Mayor Johnston, council members. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And Julie and Don have said it all. And you know, as part of the treasure of Ojai is its culture and what people believe in and what people think and how they feel about a place that, you know, was referred to as Shangri-La, you know, and, and the community itself, the people that really care about one another and how things are handled. And it's, it's up to you guys and it's us, to us, up to us to, you know, defend what we feel is right. And so I, I urge you guys to, you know, sit down and listen and think about what we're trying to tell you and explain to you, how things should be handled in, in a situation that we could all live with and grow with. Because once we're gone, we're gone, and it's left to somebody else. And they need to know, there needs to be a precedence to that. So I hope that you guys can get together, make wise decisions like you are, and, and continue this, you know, legacy, continue this treasure of Ojai. And that's its community and its culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, Andrew Stasi and Alistair Coyne on deck.
I'll wait.
You'll wait? Okay.
Keep this very short. Andrew Stasi, Ojai, city and valley. First of all, thank you for your service. Thank you, Randy and Bill, for all your work. And I think you've done a yeoman's job, working on a very complex subject. Lot of details, we don't all agree, even within the context of the committee, as to what's right, what's wrong, what exception is right and wrong. But it's a, it's a difficult process finding balance between very important cultural needs and societal needs, and I think you've, you're on a very good path. Just thank you for it.
Thank you, Andrew.
So has my motion died for second, or?
No, we're.
Second.
Okay. Moved in seconds of the matter, be, to what date did you?
First meeting in February.
Okay, first meeting in February, we will, and you and Randy will be doing the fine-tuning with Julie and company?
We'll have something fine-tuned.
Okay, great. If there are no objection, the motion carries. Okay, let's see, what's our?
Okay, we had Thomas Fire Recovery, Mayor.
Uh, that was.
Does she moved it?
We were going to move the third point back, but we're the first to receive information.
Right.
The first two items, Steve?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Wanted to give a report on what the city is doing in regards to the Thomas Fire and the recovery, as well as our efforts to protect the city from mud and debris flow. Again, just to echo the comments that have been made by several speakers tonight, we're very sorry to hear about the tragedies and the lives lost in the Santa Barbara County, Montecito area. I can tell you that all of us up here have some sleepless nights thinking about those types of issues, very much so. And that was very much on the forefront of our minds as we, you know, got out of the fire phase and started moving into the recovery phase and to try to protect the residents and, and the city. So, and happy to report that we were very fortunate in terms of the, the storm and the impacts within the city limits. We did not have any reports of any significant issues or any damage or slides within the city. Again, our hearts go out to those folks who have been, you know, impacted by the fire and the, and the mud flows, and fortunately, we have not had those issues here. Although, as the public works director will be quick to point out, it's about a two- to three-year process to actually recover and come out from a fire before you get back into a quote-unquote "normal" phase again. So again, without going into all the details, I know a lot of folks are very familiar with what happened and the impacts of the fire in the community, but just, just to highlight a few of the things that we have been doing, we did put a ban on leaf blowers, which I will announce a little bit later tonight, or I can make the announcement right now, that, that ban is going to be lifted as of 8:00 a.m. Thursday morning, so people will be able to, again, use their leaf blowers. That was based on the fact that we have changed environmental conditions now with the rain, and that has greatly reduced the, the程度of the impact.
Those are battery-operated leaf blowers in the residential areas.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Could you clarify that it's still urged that people not blow ash?
Yes, thank you, council member. We would still strongly advise that if they do find ash, that they do not use their blowers, they try to find some alternative methods to clean that up, and we would ask that that continue on indefinitely as people perhaps find some pockets of ash as they move forward. But we're hoping that the rain has at least reduced that down quite a bit. Some of the other things we did, we did provide the masks, we coordinated with the county with the recovery center that was located across from City Hall. Of course, that has moved on. We've tried to put a lot of information out to residents about flood insurance, as well as trying to make sure that they could be prepared for flooding and that type of, those types of concerns. Also, continued coordinating with the county on public health issues, and working, and then Greg Grant will speak in detail about the efforts that we're doing in terms of working with the county and other agencies to try to, to manage this issue going forward, and particularly to, to protect the city. Also placing a focus on, on the communication, trying to get the information out to the public as much as possible, again, based on some of the lessons that we learned going through the Thomas Fire. And, and of course, also, you know, we worked through the issues, the cleanup of the streets and those types of things, which seemed to be working pretty well. One of the issues that did, that was raised by, by several of the public speakers had to do with the impact to the local economy and the local businesses. Staff did quite a bit of research, looking to see what other communities had done when they had been in similar situations. And what we found was that cities did not take a direct marketing role in, in most of those cases, and in fact, they really relied on existing, you know, advocates, business advocate groups, whether they be local chambers of commerce or whatnot, to really pick up and carry the message, which they do so well, of trying to let people know about local businesses, what they have to offer, and to try to get them back shopping locally. Of course, we're also continuing to work with Economic Development Collaborative of Ventura County as well. And then we also looked into, we did check with Scott Eiker regarding the Ojai Tourism Improvement District. The district has about $100,000 in funds that has not been dispersed or spent. The district has made the decision to return those funds to the hoteliers, so those monies will be coming back to the city, but we have to then distribute them back directly to the hoteliers. We cannot keep that money in any way, it needs to be returned back to them.
And why is that? Why, why did they, I realize there had to be a balance in the account, I'm not quite clear as to the value of the promotion, why they would shut it down before the, obviously using that money during the fire and during the floods is not real helpful, but it certainly could be used to do what they were doing before and that they seem to feel.
I understand the question. Right, yeah, that, that was their decision. The city was not able to, to influence that anywhere or the other, so I could not speak for them in terms of why they made that decision that way.
And whose money is that? That was a sort of a fee or a tax on people who stayed in the hotels. Are the hotels going to use it to do what the money was for?
That's up to the hoteliers. My, my understanding, speaking with the attorney, that it goes back to them.
The district is operated by a board.
Correct.
And that board is made up of the hoteliers, and when the city elected not to continue with the district, any funds needed to be decided on what was going to happen to them by that board, and the board elected to give it back to the hoteliers that had collected it. They could have said they were going to give it, they could continue the marketing efforts if they wanted to, but it was not required to. Once the, once the district had, had not been renewed, any remaining funds, the board could decide what to do with it.
And they could have decided to remain aboard and spend it, right?
Correct.
Right.
They could have.
Councilmember Blatz is correct. The statute under which the OTID operated provided for two options for funds upon dissolution of a district. One, returning them to the hoteliers from which they were collected, or two, using them for the purposes for which they were collected, the marketing purposes.
Right.
As you have heard, the OTID decided upon a vote of their board to return them.
Interesting message, okay.
So also wanted to follow up a little bit more on what we're doing or what EDC VC is doing. They have, they are coordinating with the governor's office of Business and Economic Development. They did recently publish an ad in the Ojai Valley News encouraging people to shop local. And they have also reached out to, to Visit California, and they expect that Visit California will also be starting a shop-local campaign themed around natural disasters that have occurred within California in an effort to try to bring people back. Also think, moving on from that, did want to report that we, we did, I did meet with Michael Weaver, the individual who had come to city council, had a very good meeting with Mr. Weaver, and we were trying to explore some ways that we might be able to go after some of those, those grants. One of the things that I think we both agreed in our meeting was that, you know, our efforts are really part of, of a greater regional effort, so I think we really need to be a seat on the table in terms of the efforts that the county is doing. So we're going to continue to work with Mr. Weaver and watch as those grants come out and be available, and see if there are perhaps some things that we could do within the city limits that we could apply for. But it would appear that a lot of those grants were more focused to fuel reduction on lands that would be outside the city limits. Of course, we know we have our issue back here behind City Hall, and we have a, a plan in place for how to get that addressed this spring. So, but we will continue to pursue that with Mr. Weaver and see if there are some additional resources that we might be able to leverage there. At this point, I would like to ask Mr. Grant, Public Works Director, to come forward and give an update on, on the efforts that we're doing with the post-fire debris management, and also if you could give an update on, on where we are with the, with the storm and all that. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. Yeah, I guess in general, yeah, the storm last night wasn't, didn't pack the punch locally that we expected, which is good news. I think we're all, I think the idea was to stay, being heavily prepared for the worst, but hoping for the best. So I think we land up with about two and a half inches in town here. And I think that varied throughout the valley, but it was quite a bit less than we expected. And we never really, I think in the middle of the night, around three or three o'clock, another pound around four or five, you know, there was a pretty, I don't think it really reached the half an inch per hour, but it was pretty heavy rains for a while there. So I think all in all, we had a tree that came down over in San Gabriel off of Gridley. A eucalyptus came down, and we also had a, trying to think, a minor landslide up on Shelf Road, but it's not something you can actually drive through, just smaller slides that went out of the road. So I think overall, we did really well here in town, so we're happy with that. We did have crews out all night long. We had two trucks out keeping an eye on things. I think the biggest headache we had was sycamore trees. The sycamore trees are huge, and they plug drains up. It's always the first storms of the year, they plug all of our inlets up, and we have to be out there just basically on storm patrol, kind of raking out the leaves as we go through the night, and occasionally branch. branches and other debris block up. Over the past few years, we made improvements on the perimeter ditches around the city, where we put, we call them debris bowlers, but they look just like a boulder you see in a parking lot. And we put those upstream of the inlets on perimeter ditches, and breaks up masses of debris that come up and head towards the inlets, and they can plug them all at once. So if we can kind of hit them on each side of the ditch a couple times, it breaks it up and holds them for a while and makes it move. And that's helped us out a lot, as well as being careful about all of our trash catches that we have at all the inlets to make them big. A lot of them were too tight, and they're blocking too much up at these inlets. So we've been pretty successful, and we're hoping we stay that way. Keep, I guess that's part of the report here, that, you know, the storm patrol portion will be extra vigilant through this storm period, keep our drains extra clear, realizing there's just higher potential debris coming in. And I want to thank the Ventura County Watershed Protection District was very cooperative. One of the primary debris basins and channels that goes through the city is from the Fox Canyon Branca. That's the one when you go up Signal Street and you start going up Shelf Road, there's a Fox Canyon Trailhead. And that drainage all comes into the, on North Montgomery up on the top side, there's a 66-inch reinforced concrete pipe drain that goes from that area. And they were, we were looking at stationing or hiring a contractor to have an excavator there just in case the inlet clogged, and they brought up their own excavator and stationed it there. So it was a very nice cooperative effort there, they just stationed it, and we were monitoring it, and if the, you know, need occurred, we were going to have an operator come out and man the excavator and push it. And we did the same thing with ours, we had one of our crew people here, who's good at IT, is also a really good operator, and he lives up in the track near Mercer and Grandview, and also a couple other drains that can potentially clog from the Wildland Interface there. So he, we had him take the backhoe home and park it outside of his house, so it was pretty handy, so he could still get sleep, but he had his phone by his bed. If there was an issue, he'd be hopping in it and going right out to clear the drains, so.
I was wondering why I saw that IT operator. Did the electronics malfunction?
Only in Ojai.
Right, right. So, we're pretty relatively small crew, but we try to utilize them best we can, to get them some sleep and have them on call. So we saved overtime, but, and we didn't need them last night, that was good. But in general, for preparation, I do want to mention, there's a five-step program that we laid out on page three of the administrative report. The first step being, to make, these are all measures to assure that we're doing everything we can to protect the city from potential debris flows into the city related to the fires. The fires, I'll get into it a bit, about how they've been assessed, what the impacts of the fires could be for debris flows. So number one was to assess the impacts of the fire. Number two is to model the potential debris flows. Number three is to provide improvements and maintenance to mitigate potential impacts. And number four, providing storm patrols, which I was just talking about during every storm, to keep the drains clear. And lastly, developing contractor support and agency support for equipment, like I was talking about with Watershed Protection District. So number one is assessing the impacts of the fires. Later in December, the, a group called the Bear Team, if you've heard of this, is the Burn Area Emergency Response Team, the BARE for an acronym, and they are composed with USGS people, with US Forest Service people, and they go out and monitor all the slopes out there for how much burn there was, how hot were the soils, and how were they affected, what kind of soils are in place that are up front. And they come up with maps that assess things like category, all those categories I just mentioned, and then they estimate the total debris flow from various canyons throughout the whole area. The first area they did was Ojai Valley, and then they were heading down Ventura after that. And so, they estimate the total debris flow, and then the potential for debris flow, and then they have a combined hazard map, and I'll review that in a second.
Mayor, can I ask one question while we're on this? Just on these areas that are being assessed, do we keep records of parcels that have been impacted in the past regarding major damages to housing? For instance, Daly Park, which is one block above me, that catch basin which is fed by that brank up in that track, has filled with debris twice, and has had major, I mean catastrophic impacts to all of those parks, all of those homes adjacent to that park. I'm just wondering, was that one of the areas that was assessed?
Absolutely, yeah. Daly Park is considered a high-risk area. So, I'll go over the maps in just a minute, and then the modeling of potential debris flows. There's a consultant that helps us with a FEMA mapping, and they're, he's a hydraulic expert, and they have a way to categorize what water flows and debris flows generally travel the same ravines and so on. So he can do a debris flow analysis for us, and that would be helpful. We could do a couple outreach meetings to the community and discuss anybody who's in a potentially risky drainage area, just like Councilman Haney just mentioning around Daly Park and so on, that where would the debris, if it clogged, and essentially, this modeling takes all the culverts within the city and clogs them intentionally, and shows where the flow occurs. So you can warn people in the neighborhood how much flow might occur into their area if any of those significant culverts overflow. Generally, people are aware of those, if they've got any history, and the neighborhood always has history, but it's still a good idea to remind them of them, and, because some areas like Daly Park have clogged, I think in 2005 was the last clog, and before that, I guess, it clogged at some point also. Yeah, back in the 90s during a few of those storms. But there's other drains that are smaller that would still potentially cause damage to adjacent homes. So it's a great way that we could reach out to the community and show them these maps and make sure they're aware of this. We could also, I guess the next category was providing improvements and maintenance to mitigate potential impacts. And the recommendation from staff there is that we allocate $25,000 to preseason basin cleaning and detention and drainage clearing. So we've already implemented quite a bit of that, it's, but we could do other measures. We could put more of these debris bowlers out there, we could reinforce some of the inlets with K rails and other features, and to help. If, you might have already heard this, but debris is generally considered a bulk approximately 30% to 50%, depending on how much mud and how much vegetation you get into the water runoff. So where a drain might run at near capacity, when you get a lot of mud or debris into it, it can bulk up and overflow the inlet. So you can do things like, if you had an inlet, for instance, the fireplace is a good example here, it's a typical appearing inlet, you could take that inlet and put K rails around the top of it, in a horseshoe shape, and that would bring up the debris and hydraulic loading on it by another three feet or so around it and contain it, and help force it into the culvert, maybe give time for the crew to get in there and clear it out as well. So you can do that on a smaller scale, and you can do it on bigger scales also.
Greg, before you move forward on your modeling potential debris flows, you've got a cost analysis of roughly $5,000 to $10,000. You didn't, you didn't talk about that, or was I not listening?
Yes, you're correct, yeah. I originally estimated 5,000 to 10,000, and I did receive their proposal, it's closer to 13,000. So it's a little higher than that.
So that's an assessment above and beyond what we've already received from the BARE?
Yes. Yes, that would be detailed, two-dimensional modeling of the entire city, all the culverts in the city, to see where all of them would flow if they were clogged.
Okay. And so is that something that we could, again, that we could keep on record and use for next year and the year after and the year after?
So underneath the mitigation measures, we're talking about preseason detention basin cleaning and drainage cleaning. We've already implemented quite a bit of that, we've been up on Shelf Road, I think that's the highest risk you'll see that we have up there, is those hillsides above the Shelf Road, and we've already cleared the upside of all those culverts, and some have small detention basins, they're not too significant, but we've cleared them, and it's been helpful. We haven't seen significant loading from this past storm, we've already inspected all those. And then also, we should have ongoing support during the storms, if we need contractors to step in with equipment to clear mud or debris or channels, recommending having that money allocated, so we have them on call and available to help us. I think I've already mentioned, providing storm patrols during the storms to keep them clear, we have our own crews, but if we, we generally can handle our own crews, but if we were in a situation, it'd be ideal to have that feature up above, where we could have contractors back us up. And then we're also looking at developing agency and contractor support. I think we have a pretty good network on that already, we already have contacts with county, Public Works, Roads, and also Watershed Protection District, a good example being the fact they supplied the excavator on our request at Fox Canyon Branca. But we also have a list of contractors which are willing and able to support us in town that have equipment, heavy equipment, in the valley. And then somewhat also Caltrans, they're usually pretty busy during these storms themselves, they're not that available. But Caltrans, we know them as well, the Forest Service Calfire, as well as public agencies like Casitas and OVSD. So I think that's the general concept there, and if you're interested, I'll just highlight the maps and what's going on with the maps.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question. It seems as though the damage that was done in Santa Barbara County and Montecito was through mud flow and debris flow and actual houses being lifted from their foundations and forced downstream. What was the, and we didn't seem to have any issues like that. Why is that? I mean, why is it that they would have such an extreme mud and debris flow even over the 101 freeway, whereas we didn't experience any of that in the Ojai Valley? And was it what we did, or was it our topography is different? And what would keep us from having that same problem the next time?
It's primarily, I mean, I wish I could say it's our outstanding crew that was out there last night, but I don't think that would say. But I think it's primarily the, a combination of what the BARE team looks at, it's the topography combined with a soil type, and combined with the burn temperatures and so on earth factor. But primarily, I was just up on the hillsides up Canyatta Larga, taking some fire roads back over the top towards Ventura, and those hillsides were all chapparrell, burned to the ground, there's nothing left out there, it's just minor stubs. But that soil is highly erosive, clay silts up all around those hillsides. And you can see when you get up on the top, they're just eroded canyons with vertical drops dropping off all over. When you get up on Shelf Road, luckily, you see a lot of sandstone up there, it's a much more stable rock. It's not super stable, we're not talking granite or anything, but it is sandstone, and so it's a much more stable, and that's a result in these BARE maps, that you see much lower risk for us.
So is it principally the soil type, would you say? Because the Laconcheeta massive mudslide was the result of the type of soil that it had up above it.
Right, right. I think it is primarily soil and topography.
And other conditions, right.
There was a property owner held culpable for that situation.
Right, but it also was the soil.
Yeah, the Laconcheeta situation, which I got to preside over many years ago, that is considered to be one of the largest landslide areas, on the West Coast at least, if not in the, in the country. And the reason why there is an area there where all those houses are built, it was the railroad came in and cleared it back to keep it from going over their railroad tracks. So there's like 100 and some odd years of this thing coming down, and then suddenly, you know, people forgot about that and said, oh, this is a nice place to build, and they built right under it, and they actually tore the sign down right next to the house that got buried 10 years earlier. So I think the answer is, is what you've just said, it's topography, it's soil's condition, and it's where you build places. And the reason why, you know, Ojai did as well as it did, and the reason why people live in the Ojai, even back with the native people, this is a much safer place to be than in those canyons, because you remember the Sycamore Fire, those of us who do, there were a lot of deaths in that case, where the water came right through into the house, took the judge out, he was in bed asleep, you know, I mean, if you build in those places, unfortunately, we haven't. And that goes along with what was being said at the earlier meeting we had tonight about what the planning commission, where you approve your development. We're pretty much built out, so it's not much of a question for us unless we start annexing territory. But you build in the canyons on the hillside, and it's a whole different world.
Yeah, those hillsides above Ventura will never be built on, they're not stable enough to build on, they're highly erosive, highly prone to landslides and so on.
Well, Greg, let me just interject something really quickly here, too, and I think this is an obvious statement, but, you know, when you get excessive rates of rainfall, and, you know, that could just be just some wild crazy cell that just comes in and just hits one area with just intense rainfall for a short period of time, it's very hard as a planner to try to predict for, and, I mean, it's kind of like, you know, how do you, how do you survive if you get hit by a truck going 85 miles an hour? There's, you know, there's not much you can do, so it's certainly that intense rainfall. Yeah, right.
Okay. Should we look at the slides then, or is there any other comments? This was in the administrative report packet, and this is, again, you can see that down below, it shows USGS and also Calfire, the primary people, they have a team of about a dozen that go out immediately afterwards, this Burn Area Emergency Response Team that assesses soils and so on. So here is debris flow probability. You can see the Ojai Valley in the center, not very well, I've got a close-up here afterwards. But the higher risk was the red, the secondary risk was the orange, and then it goes to blues, a darker blue, a little higher risk, with lighter blues, the lower risk. So you can see the Ojai Valley, I mean, in the back hills, well away from Ojai, luckily, are more erosive and more risky. But directly over the Ojai Valley, they're better, and you can see that here, the close-up. So...
The Ojai donut again.
Sorry. I didn't catch that.
The Ojai donut again.
Oh, right, right. It saved us one more time.
Are you on attachment A, Greg?
I'm on attachment A, I believe it is, yeah.
Because A is very hard to interpret.
And this is a close-up.
Actually, that's the close-up of A.
Sorry, let me see if I make sure I have it. This is the debris flow probability, so that is attachment B, yes. Okay. So here, you can see the close-up, and I don't think the pointer works great here, but, yeah, on that screen, it isn't the best approach.
The chief.
But...
I saw the red dot on your chest.
The other pointer, Greg, do you have the pointer that controls the slides?
You mean for a laser or for another pointer? Yeah. I think that, but in general, I think you can see off to, see the center where it says Ojai, and directly north, and a touch to the left or the west, you see that orange one. That orange one is Fox Canyon Branca. And you can see that circle, that's the Delaro Drive circle. So that is, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, so that would actually be Stewart Canyon. Stewart Canyon Debris Basin is up in that area, right? So when you drive up Signal, make a left on Pratt, you'd be at Stewart Canyon Debris Basin. So that one is a higher risk, it's got the, but it also is a huge basin. If you've been out there, I don't know the exact acreage, but it's a lot, I don't know, I'll ballpark, seven acres, anybody want to take a guess? Seven acres, 40 vertical feet or more of capacity. So it's got a huge capacity, and Watershed Protection District felt very confident that it's going to do just fine. They haven't had a history of heavy flows into it, they haven't even had to clean it for 20 years. But back during the burn of '85, unfortunately, it wasn't many people there knew what the history was in '85, how much it was loaded. But we feel confident there's good capacity there. The next drainage area to the right has got that dark blue tip on it to the Ojai side, and it's got the lighter blue. So that one is into the, the light blue is 20% to 40% up higher in Fox Canyon, that's above Shelf Road. And then when you get down lower, it's the dark blue, which is 20%. So that's the end of Shelf Road, the end of Signal Street at Shelf Road. So if you go up to the top and you look off to the right, there's a channel that drains there. So the good news is, the burn got pretty close up to the trailhead, and there's quite a few large sycamore trees and things there that would protect debris flows, they act like giant debris bowlers, they would break up debris flows and slow them, and then it would drop over Shelf Road and get into that whole canyon, which was not burned at all, and there are significant trees and so on there to help slow it down and break it up as it would potentially move down to where there's some driveways that cross from Signal Street, and they've got some culverts for driveways there that would break it up, some 5x5 type culverts. So there's a lot of area to break that all up. So we've walked all that with various agencies, like the National Resource Conservation System, as well as Watershed Protection, and we've, everybody feels reasonably confident that that area should be vigilant and be careful, and that study will be helpful for us to talk with the neighbors there, but they're all very aware of flooding conditions already that surge up in that area. So, and their homes are located in a way up off the channel, they're not in the direct potential debris flow path, assuming it's a reasonable size. If you go into the next one to the right is the blue one, and that takes it down to zero, 20% probability. And that is the drainage that goes in above North Montgomery Street and adjacent to Grandview. So there's a couple more there, just farther right at the limit of the city property, you can see that they're solid blue as well. And those are draining into the field next to Mercer Ditch out there. And so those have some very long drainage paths also from Shelf Road to get down through, and there's a lot of large trees in there to help break up potential paths. So that this one, so that was the probability of a debris flow. This one tells the volume prediction, not too helpful at this scale. But when you get closer like this, the same canyons, you see that orange line, that is the Stewart Canyon Debris Basin. 10,000, 100,000 potential yards of flow, but it's got the huge basin out there. You go to the next one to the right, we're in the yellow zone, which is 1,000 to 10,000, that's Fox Canyon Branca up there. It's got a long path, a long ways to go. That's a pretty solid amount of debris potential still, but it'd be difficult to make it down and actually clog the inlet, which is up at North Montgomery, the one that we staged the excavator at. And here's the debris flow combined hazard. This takes several factors they have and combines it onto one risk allocation. And then you can see here, they basically rate it as low, moderate, or high. So they've got the high one being the Stewart Canyon Debris Basin above Del Oro. And then you go to the right, and they've got Fox Canyon at moderate, and then they've got the other ones at low to the east of Fox Canyon. So that's relatively good news. We're still trying to be very vigilant and keep these debris basins cleared out and doing everything we can to keep the flows moving. And we are working with NRCS right now on a couple potential grants to help us reinforce those inlets to make sure they contain debris or excessive flows in there. And we're also working with Watershed Protection District on that Fox Canyon Branca up top. And that was, if you get to the recommendation, that was a minor variation on that that Attorney Summers has got, which would basically take this money we're allocating and let us use that to leverage potential grants with NRCS to improve things.
I'll cover that in a moment.
Yeah, so that was it, unless there's any questions.
I have one question. You know, the areas that are not inside city limits, but obviously everyone considers them to be part of Ojai, and that's our 150 to the east, our obviously 150 to the west, 33 up, 33 down. How much communication are you in with the county regarding the conditions that are happening there? And I've noticed that we've done some communication on Facebook and things of that nature. I know James has been doing that. But how much communication are you actually, are you receiving any information regarding conditions on all four of those arteries there?
Primarily my communications with the Ventura County Watershed Protection District, as well as the Forestry Service. So they, in several of these meetings we've had, they are talking about the issues they have. Like Thatcher Creek is a major concern they have, as well as down in Casitas, the canyon crews were working on all weekend. You might have seen them at that bridge as you pull in. I think that might be called, is it, if I should take a guess, is it Thomas Canyon, Big Center for Fire? But anyways, so they were talking about the major areas they're focused on, because they're really taking maps just like we have here, with the concerns, where there's... The NRCS is primarily interested in funding these grants when there's homes at potential risk.
I'm just looking at communication, I'm not necessarily, I just think...
That's Steve Bennett's bailiwick and Jeff Pratt outside the city. We have pretty much our hand.
If I may just chime in, so in the middle of the, obviously a disaster like in last night's case, the county EOC is open. I was here all night at our police department, so making sure that we had resources, because I have responsibility not just for the city, which didn't see any effect at all, but also the unincorporated greater valley. And Caltrans had equipment staged, the Ohio Patrol had equipment staged, and as issues were occurring, that information was being shared with the necessary agencies. And had anything been needed either of assistance from Ojai to the unincorporated area or vice versa, then that would have been communicated. I had both Greg's number as well as the on-duty person's number on the board as well.
I think what I'm looking for is just any information that we can convey to the community just to help them sort this out would be beneficial at all. So I'm not saying go and get it, I'm just saying if you receive it, let's share it, that's all.
I think also it's the, is it VC Alert and VC Ready? Those have references to these maps, so people can look at the canyons where they are adjacent to. And it has reminders that if you have any flooding in the past, or if you're in somewhat of a risky area, you better be extra vigilant now. And it seems like that message has been put out pretty well.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes, I thoroughly enjoy, actually, really do, getting woke up at 3:00 and 3:00 and 4:00 in the morning with VC Alert on the cellphone. It does get you going at 4:00 in the morning, you hear that thing go off, but...
I'll call you regularly.
He's kind of, oh, oh!
Well, there's, and so there's a couple of things, right? VC Alert is just an email which you can have on silent that won't bother you at all. But then there's the emergency broadcast that comes out, which is the alert, which...
That's what I get at 4:00 in the morning.
Which is, yeah, which we all got at about 4:00 in the morning, but I was obviously wide awake already, so it didn't affect me at all.
But the question I wanted to ask was, with the federal declaration, are we, is any of this, and are we sure we are maximizing what we can apply for for reimbursement? My understanding is that sometimes even the extra time involved by administrators can be logged and supplied. And does the declaration with the, for the fire include some of these other expenses that I think we're all going to vote for that might be partially reimbursable under the federal declaration and state declaration?
Yes, and in fact, we have, when I was going to, when Mr. Grant was done, I was, part of my follow-up on my presentation was I was going to present to you some revised language the city attorney and I worked on regarding recommendation number two, to allow me to leverage city funds to go after grants, for example, from the Natural Resources Conservation Service or other agencies, so that we could leverage our funds.
Thank you.
So I will be presenting that as a modification or recommendation.
So we can get, we have some people in the audience have some items yet to come up tonight, so if we're ready for a motion?
Do you have a...
If you would like, yeah, so basically, the recommendation would be to receive the information, and then for recommendation number two, the, what were, the modification would be to authorize the city manager to approve post-Thomas debris management measures, as outlined in this report, for an amount not to exceed $85,000. And as part of the funding authorization, staff requested that council authorize the city manager to sign necessary agreements to assert additional grant funding from the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service or other federal or state agencies to leverage these city funds as matching funds and not exceeding the $85,000 city funding level.
I so move.
Second.
Yeah, moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, call the roll.
Thank you.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you, Greg.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Pardon me?
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, so are we done with this item number three? We're going to carry over to a workshop?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, when the city manager will get back with the time and place?
Yes, I will.
Five-second comment? I just want to thank...
Sorry, your time's up.
I want to thank Mr. Grant, because as with the fire, it was a combination of the skill of the firefighters and the luck of the winds. I think the skill of your public works people, combined with the luck of not being inundated with rain like Montecito did, is what did the trick. So again, credit where credit's due to your staff, you know.
Okay, we have now item number four, and that is...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is a consideration of the Ojai Valley Inn's request to make a monetary contribution in lieu of providing an art project for the TOPA building renovation. So the recommendation is that the city council approve the Ojai Valley Inn's application to make a monetary contribution in lieu of installing a public art project onsite under Ojai Municipal Code Section 4-16.206 to satisfy the public art requirements for its TOPA building renovation. Want to note that this item has gone to the Arts Commission's Public Arts Committee, as well to the Arts Commission. They considered the request on January 2nd, and they voted five in favor, none opposed, two absent, to recommend this matter to city council, basically agreeing with the, recommending that the city council approve the payment in lieu of providing the art onsite. The waiver of that can only be approved by the city council. You have your recommendation from the city council, excuse me, from the Arts Commission. Staff would also concur with the recommendation to allow them to make the payment in lieu of providing the art onsite. You have to answer any questions. Well, I should note, sorry, Mr. Mayor, the project valuation is determined to be 1.221 million, and the art fee total is $22,218. So that would be the amount that would be paid into the city's public art fund should the motion be approved, should the recommendation be approved.
Mayor Johnston, are there any comment cards on this?
I don't have any cards.
Well, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, please do.
I'm going to move to approve the Ojai Valley Inn's application to make a monetary contribution in lieu of installing a public art project on the site to satisfy the public art program requirements for its TOPA building renovation.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded.
I have a question. I need to be clear on this. The money from the Inn goes into our public arts fund.
That's correct.
But are we obligated then to put the public art on the Ojai Valley Inn grant?
We are not.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item, item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is also related to public art and the Ojai Valley Inn. This is a request from the Ojai Valley Inn for a waiver from strict compliance with the public art requirement for the farmhouse project. In essence, what the Inn is trying to do is move forward with their project without having completely satisfied the public art requirement at this point. As you are well aware, that the ordinance requires that art be approved and installed prior to issuance of building occupancy. What the Inn's request here is that they be allowed to have their building permits issued for the farmhouse project with the condition that the Inn would fully comply with the city's public art requirements by placing funds in an escrow amount. And then they would need to submit their proposal for a public art project by March 10th of this year. That project would then have to be found, you know, unless and until the city approves of that art project onsite, then they would not be found to be in compliant with the public art requirements. Basically, the trigger or the hammer there is the certificate of occupancy. This matter has also been to the committee to approve public arts, as well as the Arts Commission. They also heard this matter at their special meeting on January 2nd, and they voted five in favor and zero opposed and two absent to recommend approval of the Inn's request to the city council. Staff also supports the request for the city council. Again, the idea would be that they would immediately provide a deposit into an escrow amount. The building value for this project is determined to be 3.672 million, and that calculates out to a public art fee of $46,721. But again, just to be clear here, with the previous item, this is not a proposal at this point to put money into the public art fund. It is to hold the money into an escrow until they can come forward with their design to the city. And again, that deadline would be March 10th of 2018. If you have to answer any questions, and representatives from the Inn are also here if you have any questions.
Do we have any cards? No.
Would you like to make a motion?
Are the representatives from the Inn going to say anything?
Well, if they haven't put a card in, they don't, they'll have an opportunity if they need to. What's your...
So the motion is the, for the consideration of the Ojai Valley Inn's proposed waiver for strict compliance with the public art requirement for the farmhouse project to place into an escrow account $46,721 and to meet the three listed criteria. Agree to immediately deposit the total fee amount into an escrow account, set a deadline of March 10th, 2018, by which the Ojai Valley Inn will present the art design to Kappa for approval, and agree that a stop work order will be issued by the city if the project is not submitted by March 10th, 2018.
That was motion to approve, wasn't it?
Yes.
Questions?
Okay, my question...
I've got a few, go ahead.
Yeah, my question is, and forgive me, I'm pretty tired, but I'm not understanding why this is not going into the public arts fund.
Well, there's a, the way that the code is written is the applicant has the choice to either do, well, actually, the code requires that the applicant do the art onsite. And then if they do anything to vary from that, either place it offsite or to make the payment of the public arts fund, that requires approval from the city council. So typically, they're doing art onsite unless they're seeking to make the payment.
But onsite within view of the public right-of-way. And I don't know how you get the public right-of-way to be able to view unless it's going out on Ojai Avenue at Country Club. Because it's private property with an easement for people to pass over, open to the public.
Right, and at this point, we don't know what they're going to be proposing. I don't know if they're planning to do art onsite or to do the waiver.
I attended the meeting of Kappa and the Arts Commission and councilperson Francina. This came up, and I believe that the position of the Arts Commission, listening to their deliberations, is that they're very aware of that issue. But they feel at this point, they don't want to hold up the building permits, so they want to have the money in escrow, and then they will go through the process of determining what to do in terms of public art, including the issues that Mayor Johnston raised, but it doesn't preclude...
Did they talk about putting the money in the art fund as the escrow fund?
No, they want, the escrow is there to allow the building permits to proceed while they then have time to look at a specific proposal from the Inn, which may or may not satisfy the requirements.
But could we not do the same thing by putting it in the art fund with an understanding that there'd be a certain time limit, as something was mentioned in here, to come up with a mutually acceptable project?
Mr. Mayor, the art, the art, public art fund belongs to the city.
Right.
This is, these are funds that belong to the Inn.
These are funds that belong to the Inn, just like the last item we talked about. And they have a choice, or they, we have a choice as to whether they pay the money in lieu of...
No, no, they, we don't have that choice.
That's not how the code reads.
They, they, the code says they have to put public art on their property. They can come to us for a waiver of that and pay an in-lug fee, which is what we just approved. In this case, they still want to put it on their property, but they don't want, they don't have the public art to get approved yet, so they want to have until March in order to get that approved. Now, there's other waivers that they can ask for too, which means it might not have to be seen from a public right-of-way if Kappa were to approve that, such as the public art that was approved at Sea Fresh is artwork inside the building. And if they can't come to terms on where it's going to go and it can't be approved, then we might, they might put it into the public art fund. But they can't put it into the public art fund and then take it out.
No, we could put it into the public art fund with an agreement or understanding that that money would be spent on the project they come up with once that's been agreed to.
I don't believe that's, I don't think we can do that.
That wouldn't be consistent with the present public art ordinance.
Right, the ordinance specifically says that the waiver has to be a recommendation from the Arts Commission, I believe.
And does it say that specifically that you can waive the condition of doing this before the project starts?
It allows the city council to waive compliance in whole or in part, which is sufficiently broad to allow the city council to, in this case, allow deferring complete compliance.
Right, but that's not whole or in part when it comes to depositing the money with us.
Well, the problem being that the money isn't, is deposited as a security to ensure that they complete the project. It wouldn't be able to be spent by the city if they complete the project.
Right.
And we couldn't spend, we couldn't spend the money on, out of that fund for their public art project. If they give the money to the city under the public art fund, then the city controls it and spends it on any public art project it wishes.
I don't buy it.
Well, that's what the ordinance reads.
If you...
The council could change the ordinance if wished.
Right, but do we not have the right to put a public art piece anywhere in the city that would be acceptable both to the property owner and to the community?
We have the right to do that if the applicant asks for it and the city agrees to it. The public art... to it. The public art ordinance gives the applicant the choice.
That's what I'm talking about, the agreement.
To date, they haven't asked to do that. To date, they've asked to defer compliance.
But they could, could they not?
They have the right to do so, but they haven't done so yet.
We might, we might in my motion add a fourth condition is that by the March 10th deadline, that they come back to us and they either have their art project planned and are committed to it, or by the 10th, they make that decision to ask for the waiver. But that's entirely up to them, and they have the 10th to do that, and then technically, as far as moving any of the art pieces around the city or utilizing that money, it still has to go through Kappa, and it still has to go through the Arts Commission. So putting it into an escrow account with a date certain of March 10th to, for the Inn to make a decision is actually in their best interest and in our best interest.
What is the, what is the March 10th? That's when they're going to submit to the Arts Commission?
That was the deadline that we said they had to submit their art proposal to the city, and would then go to Kappa and then up through the process.
Okay. Couldn't we add to this motion that they either submit the arts project to the city by the 10th or do the in-lug fee to the city?
Well, if you were gonna make an in-lug requirement, I would think you'd have to do it before that deadline, so, I mean, I'm, I don't...
Why? I mean, they're asking for special consideration.
They're only asking to decouple in time, not to change the procedures under the ordinance.
Right, but what I'm saying is, what if they don't?
Exactly.
Well, then that's, that's what the deadline's for.
The council, I think, could...
No, but what, but if they don't meet that deadline, there's no hook.
Yeah.
They don't get their certificate of occupancy.
They don't get their CO.
Right.
And if they don't?
We wouldn't do that to you, Alex.
Well, that's in the motion.
That is within Mr. Mayor Protamhaney's motion. The trigger in the present draft before the council is if they haven't submitted a project by the 10th, the city can stop work on the project. The city could also take the $46,000 in the escrow account and complete it in public art itself.
Right.
Oh, that's what, it already says that we can take the money.
That's what I'm saying.
But only if they don't use it by one hand.
If they don't comply.
That's built into section...
See if it becomes ours, so.
That's built into section four.
We can take money out of their escrow account?
Under the terms of the agreement, yes.
It's a condition of the escrow.
Right. And that's in section four of the agreement.
I agree to it.
Okay, I got it.
So, see if I got it. I think maybe we're all getting... You're saying, Randy, that if they, if they, an approved project is not, or a project is not submitted that's approved, by that date, that money then will default, or...
It's submitted.
Right. Deadline is submission, not approval.
It's a submission to the Kappa.
To Kappa.
The reason for that being that the Inn can't control our process.
Right.
The Kappa and the Arts Commission are part of the process.
So in other words, they could come up with a design, they could take it to Kappa, and Kappa could say, you know what, that doesn't fit the criteria of what we're looking at.
That's correct.
And so then they're back to a redesign and a renegotiation of when that new design will be set forth. So I think this is a win for both parties.
I agree, and it respects the ordinance.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay.
So we had a motion, we had a second?
We have a motion and a second, okay. Roll call.
Mayor Johnston?
No.
Mayor Protamhaney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
I am gonna go back and watch that tape. You know, I try very hard to watch every single commission tape, and I missed that one, and I regret it.
I waltzed down here and watched it in person.
Well, actually, if you read into this too, the commission did approve the same, they did approve in this recommendation.
But I wanna see the process, their thinking, and how they came to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're now to item number six.
Yep.
Amendment to the Agreement of the Building Safety.
There we are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils.
Excuse if you don't want to sit through all the rest of the fun.
So this item was back at council's direction. They wanted some more information. We also have before you a revised proposal that we received from Charles Abbott Associates. Also want to note that Greg Robinson from Charles Abbott is here along with Tom Joswiak. Sorry if I've got your name incorrect there, Tom, are both here tonight if you have any questions for them. So at the previous meeting, council asked that staff return with a specific contract document, which we have included attached to the staff report. Also wanted a proposal specifying the cost, both on an hourly rate and the per issuance of building permit fees, including hours spent on code enforcement, and the proposal attached does detail that both on the percentage by building permit fees as well as the hourly rates to be charged. It also gives a, an hourly rate sheet if we were to request specific services or if we want to just go on an hourly fee rate, but I would not recommend that. And then just to note that the council did previously direct that staff come back with a future analysis on what it would cost to provide the proposed services in-house, and staff is working on that, and we will bring that forward as part of the detailed analysis for next year's budget. So I wanted to highlight a couple of changes in the proposal that were volunteered by Charles Abbott Associates and were well received by my office. One of the, one of, part of their proposal is that they have, are offering to increase the weekly counter hours that the building official spends. If you recall, the original RFP set some minimum hours for that coverage, and subsequent to entering into contract with Charles Abbott, we had come to them with the need to provide some additional counter hours on Friday, which they obligated that request and began providing. But going beyond that, Charles Abbott is now recommend, or offering to provide an additional hours in the Monday through Thursday from 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., and also Friday office hours would be set from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. Right now, we have a total of eight hours per week, and this proposal would increase the total number of weekly counter hours to 15 hours a week. So those are the hours when they are dedicated to be there at the counter to answer questions. The other change that they are proposing is they're proposing Mr. Joswiak serve as the city's assigned building official. David Schreiber would continue as the assigned building inspector and code enforcement officer. Rene Mario, who is now the assigned building official, would continue to serve as the project manager and senior building official, over Mr. Joswiak would be the assigned building official to the city, and he would be the onsite building official here. That is really the essence of the changes from what we had brought you previously. And again, I mentioned the associates are here from, or Mr. Robinson is here from Charles Abbott, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Johnston?
Bill?
With regard to what you just described, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce names.
Me too.
Would that mean that Mr. Joswiak and Mr. Schreiber would be answering to Rene Mario in terms of their, you know, their decisions and their duties and how they promulgated them? By stating that Rene Mario would be serving as project manager, senior building official, does that mean they're the supervisor for those two people?
She'd be the supervisor.
Okay, so policy decisions would be made by her and not the person acting as building official?
Generally, how we run our operations, the building official here would be Tom. He would generally make the decisions. If he wanted some additional help, he would go to Rene for that help for a decision.
And I guess I ask the question, what, why not have just the two people instead of a third?
I think one reason was, we just wanted to have a smooth transition of, since Rene seems to have the knowledge, ultimately, we'd like just to have Tom, but we thought having Rene's knowledge and experience with the BAB and whatnot, that could be a transition to Tom, whether or backup, not whether, her knowledge.
I'll just be real frank. I mean, part of the issue has been Rene's awkwardness with the BAB in terms of sort of embracing the policy development role that's inherent in that relationship. And frankly, there's also been some issues where the management of the process has not been consistent with council policy goals. I can give you two examples, but I don't want to get into the weeds too much. So that's just a concern I have, that, that policy goals of the council are embraced and supported as opposed to having some issues where they haven't been necessarily.
I have no problem being the project manager over Tom, and we can do that, that's not...
I don't think the idea here was to add another level up here, right.
It's more for the transition, because she's got projects she's working on, you know, currently in that.
She works for other cities and, at least one other city, I know.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess my point is, she's still, in a sense, be probably helping Tom with existing reports that have already been started and things like that.
Helping, I agree with.
And also with the EXELA program. She's, she's kind of in the lead on the EXELA transition, so, I think that's what I was...
So I guess my, Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, I'm done.
I just, my concern as I look at just the rates, project manager's $135 an hour, and then our building officials 122, and our senior building inspector is 110. So the, I guess I'm lost in how you're...
You won't, you won't be seeing those, we won't be charging those rates because we take a percentage of fees.
Correct.
So that would be something, let's say you...
Alls I'm talking about is Rene's fee, which is the highest. If she's gonna be here the least, how does that benefit the city if we keep her on, on board? That's, I guess that's my question. I just don't understand the need for that. The second thing is, I think what Bill was trying to say is the inability to coordinate herself with the culture of Ojai. That's been her biggest deficiency regarding BAB, is we're just unique in how we utilize BAB in its entity.
And I would like to, too, with Tom and city manager, I think we have a new community element director coming on board, my understanding.
In the wings, yes.
Yeah, in the wings. And I would like to, meeting with that and the BAB and kind of get everybody, know the difference between building code and municipal code, and so we keep things, you know, strict, because I think sometimes there's kind of an overlap between community development versus the building code, because the BAB comes out of section 1.8, which is in a building standards code, which is buildings and necessarily, you know, you know, planning, community development issues. I just want to make sure if we want to go that direction, that's fine. We just gotta make sure we have the right people in the right place.
Because one of the best examples of that was the non-conforming program, where some things crept into the non-conforming program with, you know, for the non-conforming unit program that were having to do with compliance with current code, which was absolutely against the whole intent of that program.
Right.
And that's the kind of thing that I'm talking about, that you just described.
Right. Yeah, that's the thing, building code versus community development regulation. So the word code kind of gets intermingled sometimes.
One thing I do want to say about Rene is she's very smart, and she is efficient, and she really understands building codes. That's never been a negative. It's technically her interaction with BAB and the fact that we can't seem to get those, those two entities working in, on the same page most of the time. So that, and then I have one other question, Mayor, is, it says here that CAA will also provide other staff at rates specified in the proposal. CAA will provide all tools and training as needed. CAA will also ensure the building official will prepare and attend all appeal hearings to the BAB. However, an hourly fee will be charged for the, for the building official to assist staff with preparing for non-code-related discussions.
Which goes back to building standards code versus community development.
Correct.
So it's gonna be community development, that's not our expertise, our expertise is building codes.
Where do you see fire maps in that conversation?
Oh, that would be, that'd be building code, because that's, that's chapter seven? Chapter seven of the building code.
That seems to be one of the biggest areas that we have failed to be able to communicate with each other on. There's always been a difference of opinion as to whose responsibility that is and how we're gonna manage those maps. I'm hoping that in the future, that's not an issue.
But our county is a little bit different than the other counties, unfortunately, but we'll figure that out.
The last question I have is, it says, when it gets to these hourly fees and preparing for non-code-related discussions, what might be a non-related?
I guess one would be, one would be, let's say, you wanted the BAB to decide, what are the, what are the building setbacks for trash enclosures on, you know, for a commercial area or something?
The word setback automatically puts it into planning, we all know that.
That'd be a planning issue, which wouldn't be...
Not a BAB thing.
That's not a BAB thing.
And they don't determine anything. They don't decide anything, by the way.
Well, that's true, they don't, or at least they take forever.
Or a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I know another frustration was the, was initiative on certain things, like the combustible vegetation issue. You know, that's a code enforcement issue. It's, that according to the fire department and CAL FIRE is clearly part of the building official's job, you know, and...
Well, and we, we acknowledge that that was something that the city had not been doing for a number of years, and to their credit, we all worked together to address that and get that handled this past year, so...
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is it just, some of these things are initiative, the state of mind of, of an initiative as opposed to, you know, being just reactive.
Sure.
And do we have a motion? I move to approve. I second. Moved and seconded.
Just for discussion, with the, with the three people as described in the structure?
I think that's a city manager issue between us and our city manager and how they run the contract.
Okay, does that, well, what I'm trying to say is Rene is defined here in this presentation as the supervisor of the other two people.
Right, but she could move away or retire. It's, the personnel is not, I would...
So that's something within the discretion of the city manager?
And they negotiate with the contractors if there's an issue that...
Absolutely, yeah. And again, I think we're really looking at this more as a transition.
Within your discretion, then, okay, I'm fine. As long as we're not locking you in, that's all I'm saying.
Got it.
Okay, any other discussion on this item? If not, call a roll.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protamhaney?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes, with my thanks for your coming tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're to number seven? No, we did number seven, that's good. So we jump ahead to number eight?
I'm gonna leave for one minute.
Oh, okay, and you want to take a couple of minutes for the...
We're fine.
No, I'm good, yeah.
I'm not bad.
There's no line to the ladies.
Actually, there's no further comments, we're gonna be done here.
Yeah, right, yeah. Okay, edit that.
Excuse me, the special event fee waiver policy is not an issue in the, in the community.
Are we on break?
Well, if we are, I'm gonna go get a cup of coffee.
I'm gonna go get a, are we on break?
There is, this, it's a two-minute break. There is, this, it's a two-minute break.
The Friday night, you know, when they want to do things that really are good for the community, it generates business, it gets people.
Right.
They have to pay $250? Because I mean, my question is, it seems like they're paying taxes and...
Right, we've actually taken an administrative position that the merchants there can do a limited number of events in the arcade and that they do not need to pay the fees to do that.
No, if you waive.
Correct.
So that's unwaved.
Okay, so that's, you waive, that would be something you would, a certain number of events.
Correct.
Would be waived.
Right.
Okay, so, but like, and if someone wants to do something, because that's, you know, in some ways, an underutilized area.
What are the boundaries of the, was it Business Improvement District or whatever you've got there?
The Arcade Plaza.
The Hiltons and the Plaza.
Right, right, right.
Is that just the arcade and the buildings that surround that?
Oh, boy, where's Mr. Grant when I need him?
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be precise. It would just seem like that.
That is basically it.
Once.
Right.
So that one, I would assume you should have the latitude to give leniency and not...
That's the thinking behind it, correct.
I believe it's defined in the Arcade Plaza Guidelines, the Arcade Plaza boundaries.
Yes, it is. It is, yes.
What is defined?
The Arcade Plaza Guidelines define the boundaries of the Arcade Plaza.
Right, okay, so I mean, it's a known area?
Yes.
And these regulations would give you that latitude to use what I would consider to be common sense and good public relations, not to tax them twice if they're paying to take care of the place and they're doing it to promote business.
Exactly.
Okay, that's great.
I think the intent of this was more because there is a stage area back there.
Yeah.
That that was more for that kind of a thing than merchants having a Wednesday night open, you know, I mean, that's, they may have some things going on out there, but it's not really an event for that area.
But didn't we have a little bit of a kerfuffle where we were going to charge somebody that was going to do an outdoor sidewalk sale or something?
Correct, yeah, and we ultimately...
Covered by this, so that we could resolve that without...
Right, correct.
Okay, so, okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, there's no further discussion, there's no objection, we'll say so ordered, is that okay? We don't have a...
It's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and now we have council representatives on local, why don't we just make those two year assignments and then we only do it in election time?
Certainly council's prerogative.
I had asked her that we all remained where we were anyway, so I think we're all...
Right, that's about the same.
Yeah, I like, I want to keep my same.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good.
I only have one addition. It says here on the Audit and Budget Committee, it says there's two, and I would just like to, as much as I'd like to be on it, I think a better representative on that would be William, so councilman wirework, says that there are two positions on it, right now there's one, unless Bill, you don't want it?
Which one are you talking about?
The very first one is.
Audit, Audit and Budget Committee.
It's Audit and Budget Committee.
The subcommittee that...
Oh, is that, was that, is that known as the Finance Committee?
Yeah.
Mr. Olson was put on there?
Oh, yeah.
The two would be, I think, Mayor...
Mayor Johnson and...
It's a typo.
It's a typo.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
It's only supposed to be one.
Yes, it is.
All right, well, there you go.
But is that what we call the Finance Committee?
The Budget Committee.
But I mean, it used to be the Finance Committee?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So the mayor automatically is on that.
Right. As is a, is somebody at large, as I recall.
That's correct, it's Mr. Steve Olson as the...
I was just...
Somebody that's large, did he say?
At large.
I heard he said at large.
Member at large.
At large.
Okay.
If I could, I could just...
It had been, it had been Lynn Clave.
That's correct, and Mr. Clave had resigned.
That's all they got, is two positions.
The only other comment on that I would make is I think we're already, we have someone finish business already, for example, on the leave policies, and I think at the mayor's discretion, if he wanted to invite my assistants, I'd be perfectly willing to invite.
Oh, I'd be happy to have you.
You know, that's all.
Yeah, because I think even in our investment program, I've got some material on that I'd like you take a look at. Okay, well...
And we'll add the LA Community Choice Board to this list as well with those appointments tonight.
Great.
And there was another one that I got a note on, I don't know if we have to do it through the council, the energy thing at the county level, the one that Linda Parks, Supervisor Parks?
Oh, community energy or something?
Yeah. That one that anybody cares that much about, she sent me a letter and asked me if I would get active or have somebody else do it.
You're the mayor.
I'm not sure what that is.
Okay, great.
And if we're going to add, add the district, it seems like we ought to make, I think it should be the mayor that sits on that. It's an important aspect, I mean, electrical service to our community, I would think...
Just upgrade that to a mayor position.
Yeah, just upgrade it to a mayor position. Yeah, that's what I think.
Mayor might not have too much to do for a couple of years at the BUC, has anything to do with it, but, okay.
The mayor's the designated, okay.
So there might be some changes, the only change I see is mayor pro term, term would be me for OBGMA versus William.
Right. That's by virtue of the office, right.
Okay, so, if there's no objection, we will, everybody's renewed for a year.
So I'll have Ms. Davis update this and send it out to council.
Thank you.
Okay, we have any council reports?
I have, oh, go ahead, Randy.
No, go ahead, Paul.
I just wanted to let everybody know that at the Gold Coast Transit meeting last week, the board needed to approve the Federal Transit Administration's audit, and part of that audit are the fare ratio requirements, and as part of that audit, once again, I just wanted to reiterate that because Ojai is considered an urban city, we are supposed to have a 20% fare ratio to our revenues, and we are only at 12%. Now, we were given one year, as I believe we went over with Greg Grant, a one-year abstain type of thing where we're not penalized for this year, but next year we will be if we don't have our fares in order and get it to 20%, and part of what we were considering was advertising on the trolleys, but that's never come back before the council.
Oh, yeah.
It is coming back at the, scheduled to come back on the 23rd.
Okay, so anyway, just, yes.
Is the 80%, what was there, 20% rule?
20%.
Is that 20% of what?
Our, the budget that we have, we have to have at least 20% of the budget coming from fares, from the...
And how do our fares compare, I can't remember, to the industry standards or whatever people are paying elsewhere?
It's set, it's set by the federal government for purposes of us receiving fund money.
Oh, we can only charge so much, so we...
No, 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 we can charge whatever we want, but the federal government says for us to get our funding from the federal government, which comes through VCTC, we have to maintain that 20% of our budget comes from our fares that we charge.
My question isn't, isn't the 20%, my question is, is in order for us to generate 20% from the fare box as opposed to subsidizing it, what would our rates look like in comparison to the average bus fare?
Oh, that was something that Greg Grant gave us, and he kind of had a chart on that, and I can't remember what it was.
Right.
Yeah.
I think the other aspect of that, too, Mayor, was the 20% was determined as to what type of community we are.
Right, correct.
And we are urban versus rural.
Right, but I was thinking, but they classified that.
And Fillmore is...
And Fillmore is rural versus urban.
Right.
And the population is...
Yeah, but it had to do with the census and all kinds of stuff.
Well, I guess it's probably the stuff outside our city.
Yeah, probably.
Because we're only about less than 25% of the valley.
And, but, it's, as I've said to the board, I said it's really nonsensical because Santa Paula, which is on the 126th...
Right.
Is considered rural, it only needs 10%, and we're considered urban and we need 20, and it's non-negotiable.
And it's four times the population?
Yeah, it's non-negotiable.
Correct.
It's non-negotiable. Who decided?
It's non-negotiable by VCTC because of how, whatever the criteria is, if we fall within that criteria, then we have to meet that fare box ratio.
They share that criteria with us?
And, oh, it is, it's there, I just don't happen to know exactly what it is, but if we wanted to have VCTC come in and explain that to us, they certainly would.
Oh, I'm sure Darren would come if we asked him, sure.
Maybe he can explain it, but he attends each of the Gold Coast Board meetings, and he was a participant in this discussion, and he also indicated he didn't particularly believe that our urban characterization was quite fair, but that's what it is. And what it means is, just to give you an idea, is if we, if we come up on this year and we're still at 12%,
Thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to subsidize...
About $80,000 penalty, if I remember, and then...
About $80,000 out of our general fund.
Eighty thousand a year?
Well, it was 80,000, I think, of the whole system, and there was a question about whether that would be split with the county, so if I remember, the hit to us was going to be about 40,000 per year, which is still very significant.
That's why we looked at marketing.
Correct.
Right, no, I remember that, I was just trying to figure out, if you look at our valley, I don't really, in the lower valley, where the bus actually serves, has got, what, 30,000 people maybe?
Probably.
And you look at Santa Paula, what's their population, 20-some?
Twenty-eight, 25 more, and then you add in, right.
And then right up the road is Fillmore, and it's how many, it's smaller.
Sixteen.
Each 10, isn't it?
Sixteen, probably, 15, 16?
So if you add those two together, they're the same size as we are, but because they've got a little green space between them, that makes them...
Mm-hmm.
Just as an example...
We're too close to Ventura, I've heard.
That is the basis for the federal determination.
Our revenues from fares was $75,860. Our operating expenses were $641,000, so that gave us a 12% fare ratio, and we needed to get it up to 20. So if you looked at 20% of 640, that's where we would need to be in the fares. I didn't do that, but what would 20% of, it'd be, what, 200,000? 20% of 640?
Yeah.
Somewhere in there, and we're at 75.
128,000.
128,000, and we're at 75. So that would be what we'd have to make up.
Council President, a quick question, in terms of the parameters that define this classification, does the, your service area, in other words, where your routes go, is that at all a variable in terms of how you're classified?
No.
No, okay.
It's pretty much population.
Well, next time you go to one of their meetings, can you ask them for a copy of whatever that criteria is for those of us who maybe want to...
In fact, why don't we have, why don't we...
I'm a VCTC rep, why don't I ask Darren for that?
Sure.
I'm going to see him Friday.
Because you're on VCTC, and their board meeting is Friday. Ask them for that.
Yeah.
Right.
You're the guy to talk to, that's right.
Darren's a good guy, like...
Yeah, take Darren and turn him upside down and shake it out of his pocket.
His son's a football player, so lots of conversation.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Is this a time when I can ask, is the January 23rd agenda real busy?
Always.
Yeah, all of them are.
The reason I ask is because as much as I want to do the Span Newt Ordinance, it's scheduled for January 23rd, I feel that Vena has been very patient, and if there, and that one is tentative, the tiny houses is tentative.
We have both of them scheduled to come forward on the 23rd of January at this time.
Okay.
Both tiny houses, and I just lost the other item.
Spain Newt.
Spain Newt, thank you.
Okay, okay, great.
Are tiny houses an item, a report and a motion, or is it just a presentation?
I haven't had a chance to review the staff report yet, but...
They have done so many presentations, and they've brought in experts from all over, so this time it will be a presentation, but my understanding is that we're going to take some action.
Yeah, we would not...
As far as making them accessory dwelling units, not...
Well, we wouldn't be bringing forward an item if it was just a presentation, there'll be actual, some staff work with some recommendations for council to consider and then give direction going forward.
And is it coming with a recommendation from our planning commission?
Yes, yes.
They've heard it, and they're going to recommend do this, and then we can either do it or modify it or turn it down?
Right, that's correct.
Okay, but we're not going to just bring it in and talk about it, right?
I hope not.
Yeah, okay, well, that's two of us at least.
Yeah, we don't have it, we don't have an ordinance drafted or developed at this point, that would be something that would come down the road.
That's what we would need, direction from council to do, is to go draft an ordinance for the planning commission to consider. A term sheet, you need direction for our term sheet.
Correct.
Yeah.
I highly recommend, I mean, you were all on the council when the presentation was made.
It's coming.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Last year, I mean, last August or whenever it was, okay, and then I was wondering about Chelsea's point, if there is any interest in...
In having a work, a study group again?
A study group, I would be willing to do that.
Well, I'd be willing to work with you on that.
Okay.
Okay.
I think, I think we should take a look, or, I don't know, I'm just trying to get a barometer, at least, I think it's...
I think we just, if the council wishes us to do it, we'll go do it.
Yeah, I think if you guys want to do it, I don't need, yeah, this is sort of like the Sustainability Committee, we don't...
I do want to do it, and I'm watching what other cities are doing, and, you know, I think it bears looking...
Well, we're kind of coming up on the 90-day review anyway, that we said we were going to have, so maybe you and I just, you know, get the work group together and talk about it.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I'd be happy to do that with you.
Okay, thank you, all right.
Can I make one suggestion to your group, educational material, we need it as much as we can get.
Good point.
So any proposals or anything that you plan on bringing back, preface that at least two weeks in advance and give us information that we can read.
Very good, yes.
Rather than the night over, three days before.
Oh, yeah.
And I plan on incorporating a lot of discussion with you, Captain Frye, Chief Frye Huff and the city manager.
Excellent, thank you.
In terms of the experience, I think that's an integral part of the, of the working.
Agreed, thank you.
And then, oh, I want to just briefly, I did go Saturday to the meeting, how do I characterize it, it was about habitat, but animals and human, it was a real sustainability meeting, and there were two people from the Land Conservancy, Ojai Trees, Raptor Center, Audubon Society, I can't think of anyone who wasn't interested in sustainable community that wasn't there, except for the ones that were looking at fireproof housing, they went on a tour, some kind of tour, and so the follow-up meeting Sunday, I highly recommend knowing, and I believe that Peggy sent everyone a tape of the meeting.
And where is this going to be held?
This one will be at the library.
Okay.
In the meeting room.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm interested, thank you.
It was so, I learned so much, and Severo was there, and he did say, he was right about, you know, they explained how we don't have to seed the ground, but everything was explained so, it was so educational, but the Audubon Society man was pretty adamant saying that, you know, if you, there were a lot of birds that were killed by the fire, I mean, it's many, many, we're just, you're just beginning to realize how much death occurred in the wildlife.
Okay, the time and the day, what is the date again, this is?
This Sunday.
Okay, Sunday.
And I'm going to double check the time, it's on Facebook, I believe it's 2 o'clock?
I thought it was 1:00.
1:00, I think it is 1:00.
Well, we'll go, we'll go far.
Yeah, but he said, anything we do for wildlife is just a drop in the bucket, it's just a leg up, especially for birds, to put, you know, put seed, the right kind of seed out, it was, it was really good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, there's county people there.
Yeah, there were county people at the meeting, too, yeah, oh, there's Roper, Chief Roper was there, he was, yeah.
Okay, we're going to get out of here by 10:30.
Let's go back to commissions.
Wake up, Jim.
Commissions and things of that nature, one, our first meetings are coming up this week, ECT and VCOG, for me, we did have a Libby Bowl meeting today, we have brought two additional members onto the committee, one is Elizabeth Afna, she's the co-owner of AZU, and Mariana, I'm sure I pronounced your name wrong, Burden, Erin Burden's wife, she's been to a lot of meetings, and we just have brought them into the fold to help us look at, but the focus this year is going to be on management and management practices for the Bowl, we will be coming back to council hopefully sometime in February, if not 1st of March with a review of 2017 Bowl, we had roughly 66 events there last year, so we're going to come back and just review the fees, fee waivers, the Sterling Venture and Contract, and what was generated from that, but we'll have a year-end review for council, and then maybe some recommendations out of it, or at least something to discuss.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm not sure how much of this, because, you know, to talk about right now, just to, but to just sort of explain what a number of business people have come to me and asked me to think about, and how council might embrace it or address it, and that's the issue of parking, and a number of the merchants in the area really feel that if there's some opportunities for the city to develop its parking assets, that it should take those opportunities, there are some opportunities now, but again, when you start talking about it, it involves possible real estate transactions, which we don't want to talk about except in closed session, so I'm not sure how to approach this, but there's a number of ideas out there that I think are worthy of our consideration, I'm not sure how to approach it, maybe the best way to approach it is, is to have a quick closed session about it, I just want to throw that out because it's a, quite a very pointed and very passionate advocacy that I've gotten from a number of the people in the merchant community to look at our options, look at our options here, and maybe because...
Can we do that through a special meeting ahead of time?
Yeah, the council...
Before the council meeting?
The council may consider real estate acquisitions or transactions in a closed session regarding price in terms of payment, which would pick up...
Or just general strategies as well, right?
Well, the line is, general strategy's got to be done in an open session, but specific price in terms of payment.
Okay.
But in this case, we'd be looking at, is the council willing to enter into negotiations? That's, that can be done under closed session, as long as we identify in the agenda notice the specific properties at issue.
Okay.
I have a question, to me, that's taking the cart before the horse, it seems to me that first, I would like to see, maybe there is one, a parking study of what there actually is, I mean, I don't want to like tie it up with a study, and then, I, there's so many questions about parking, when was the last time we looked at?
Let me, let me enter in here, yeah.
I want to deliberate.
Yeah, I understand where you're going with, I think that, Bill, you ought to talk with the city attorney and the city manager.
Okay.
What you have on your mind, and if there is a way to do that in a special session, fine, and if not, maybe the topic of parking will be part of the workshop that we do instead of priorities.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And one other point I want to make, and we've been kind of dragging our heels on this, and that is the issue of some of these front office positions still being 36-hour, and this came up recently with respect to people trying to call the Public Works Department, and Mr. Grant having to deal with inquiries from citizens on the overlay program, and I just feel like it's another example where there's a difference between expense and productivity, and I think sometimes I would urge staff to make a request to convert to a full-time position.
Okay, where are we going to meet with this?
And, because we're having a situation where our highest paid person is having to answer the phone, and it's just not right.
Okay, you and I, we're going to get together with the city manager, and I think we need now that, of course, we had a fire, and then we had a flood, but will you set a time and get Bill and me in your office, and let's go over that, because it's not just that topic, there are like five or six items I got on the list if I haven't forgotten them by the time I...
No, we haven't either, and we'll use the same excuse, the fire or whatnot, and Mr. Vega and I were starting to get back on that this week, so good timing on that request.
Okay, I have two quick ones, one, disaster council, we did have a meeting, I want to commend the city manager for his summary and getting that information out to everybody on the preparation for what was supposed to be a major incident, and thank the chief for spending the night across the street.
And the AM radio is working.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Yeah, and that was the kind of information, I think, that next time we have a fire, hopefully we're not responsible for it, and that wasn't put very well, was it?
I thought you put it perfectly, Mr. Mayor.
I thought you liked it.
The fire department is continuing their investigation, now the, next time, that for any disaster that we have, the kind of thing that you put out yesterday or last night was very helpful to a lot of people.
Good, thank you for the feedback.
Really good.
And another item that is on the horizon, that presentation, I won't do it to us until maybe late February, but Nandray contacted me and said that, you know, there's a great concern now over recycling because of China making some changes in their policies, and who's going to buy all this stuff?
It's in warehouses, it's terrible.
Yeah, exactly, so, anyway, I will, I'll schedule that with the city manager at one of our meetings.
Can I have one more thought, it seems how we're not quite at 10:30.
You don't have to use all your time, Dennis, I know that's...
So actually, real quick, you know, with all the events that have taken place, you know, especially with disasters, one of the things that keeps coming up at Libby Bowl is, in the Libby Bowl Committee and the Libby Bowl community, and community as a whole, is a marquee, and a marquee can be multifunctional, and the marquee can be used to disseminate information regarding the fires, regarding flooding, regarding community events, so again, it was brought up again today that we need to actually have a discussion regarding marquees and where's a good place to put them, and what types of marquees would we be talking about, so I'd like to put that on a future agenda item to actually add that discussion, and the benefits of them, and now is the right time to do it. I know we have one right now, and that's at the high school, the problem is, it's way up on the high school, you'd have to do sometimes a joint venture with, with the high school, you know, with the school board to actually get more information placed on that, the problem is, it's just out of sight, and we need something closer downtown, and then along with that is the actual development of the master calendar for this community, so that in turn could be posted on this marquee, so that when we start talking about all these little groups that want to do little things, we actually have a place that it can be scrolled and be seen, and some people are talking not just one site, they're talking about two sites, so I think it's a discussion that needs to be had.
Well, it is a discussion, but not a proposal yet, right, so...
No, discussion, I...
No.
But here's what concerns me, guys, about, you know, a business meeting, when we put items on that say for discussion, we become just sort of a committee of ourselves trying to solve problems as opposed to taking people who have a particular passion and a particular expertise, and then come with a proposal, so, I mean, if that, you know, what will it cost, where will it go, kind of thing, then we could have that discussion, but it worries me that we, if it's too wide open, Randy, that we end up doing like with cultural...
And it'll probably have to go before the planning commission first.
So then, so then, so then maybe the question is, you know, let me get with Steve, and him and I'll talk about it, we'll vet this.
I tell you, I agree with that, though.
I agree, too.
I think that we should have a marquee centrally located.
Or something like, into it.
Could perhaps that, I'm sorry, could perhaps that come forward as part of the discussion from the Libby Bowl Committee recommendations?
We could do that.
Yeah.
I could bring, we could bring that as one...
But I get your point, Mayor.[1647.12]